How do we notice of this meeting of the zoning board adjustment was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the Post star, our official newspapers, and was posted on the Baltimore and Wisconsin building? Can we call Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Almeida?
President.
Mr. Peralta?
Here.
Mr. Luvin?
Here.
Mr. Diorio?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Brazil?
Here.
Mr. Sainer?
Here.
Okay, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with the liberation of the just world. I feel today, Mr. Kennedy, very, I think, before we get started, I just want to make an announcement for everyone's, just to kind of set expectations. We have four applicants that we'd like to try to hear this evening, and we are planning for a hard stop at 10 o'clock. So I'm asking that the applicants try to limit their time to one hour or less. If it turns out they need more time than that, they can come back after the fourth applicant has presented, assuming that we have time left between when the last applicant is finished and it's not yet 10 o'clock. But I just want to set an expectation for everyone so it can move along. And one way to do that is to focus on the variances that are at hand, because really, we only have one job here. We either approve or deny a request for variance. Other than that, that's the only thing that we're here to do tonight. So please keep that in mind with your presentation. Try to keep it to less than an hour if you could. All right, Mr. Kennedy, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, and, oh, I think we should do, so we have the minutes for the March 28th special meeting. If there's anyone inclined, they can make a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Peralta?
Yes.
Mr. Luvin?
Yes.
Mr. Diorio?
Steve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
All right. Next is the resolution for 903 Ocean Avenue, Unit 5. This was with that unique Ocean Breeze Condominium Association. This particular application was demolition of an existing two-family home and construction of a new single-family home. And just, we have two similar resolutions tonight. I just wanted to say, I apologize, I got the resolutions late, but basically, we're saying there's nine condominium units located within this building. Some are one-story buildings, some are one and a half stories, some are two and a half, and some are three. And unlike many other standard condominium complexes, there's a uniformed building design throughout the complex, its variety of buildings, and this is a unique situation. And just because we've had this conversation before extensively with the board, what we're saying with regard to the association, a challenging question has been raised as to how the floor area ratio, building coverage, and lot coverage figures are to be calculated, i.e., should the calculation be based on the size of the individual buildings, site units, or should it be calculated based upon the size of the entire association complex? And after extensive review and consultation with a prior borough engineer, the zoning office has determined to basically take the most conscientious and conservative approach so that we're calculating all these based on the cumulative impact. And this situation has basically led to a philosophy of a communal floor area ratio policy, which has led to a, you know, unique situation where at the last meeting, one of the unit owners needed a floor area ratio variance, and the second owner did not because it's a communal. And we're just saying that this is a, basically, a unique situation. So the conditions of note for this particular application were confirmation that they comply with the prevailing fire rating requirements, and they have two dedicated parking spaces on-site for the applicant's use, confirmation that they knowingly and perpetually abandoned the two-family use associated with the existing structure, the new structure's going to be fire-rated, gutters and leaders are going to be installed on the roof, confirmation that the cellar shall be labeled as and function as a cellar and not a basement in accordance with our borough's regulations, confirmation that they install a French drain if recommended by the borough engineer, confirmation that the building coverage is 30.4% and not 29.7%, they install, confirmation that they install new permeable sidewalks, and then this was, someone hit this one, confirmation that the applicant shall remove the existing concrete sidewalk and replace the same with a new permeable paver walkway, should the association and/or the affected neighbor consent, should such consent be necessary, and by the way, we said, by the way, the board has no authority to authorize the applicant to remove pavers located on a property owned by another. And then basically, we just sort of said, and I think this is going to be the condition in all units involving that association, that it's a unique situation, and there was question raised as to whether individual unit owners own a specific portion, or whether it's common areas, and all those types of things. The natural extension of that is, you know, where does one unit owner's individual rights begin and end, and where do the other individual unit owners' rights begin and end relative to the property? And we basically said here that the answer is probably in the public offering statement in the bylaws of the association, that's sort of beyond our purview as zoning board. But it is important, so we encourage the applicant to check that out with the association, check that out with the applicant's real estate attorney, title, company, lender, and all those things, because at some point, that could be an important issue, not for us in terms of the zoning, and respectfully, we don't retain any jurisdiction on that matter, but they really should check that out. Anyway, that's the gist of the conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for the summary. I'll make the motion. Second.
Hey, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Peralta?
Yes.
Mr. Luvin?
Yes.
Mr. Diorio?
Steve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
The next was Andrew Chiarisi, 208 16th Avenue. We approved this application last month. This was use variance and bulk variance approval associated with request to construct in addition to an existing two-family home. Now, there are a lot of conditions on here, I'll hit that briefly, only because of the nature of the change, modified application that came at the last minute, but the, basically, the conditions were the downstairs, confirmation that the downstairs unit, once renovated and expanded, shall only contain three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and confirmation that there should be no improvements in the upstairs unit, with the exception of we are allowing them to install a new bathroom.
Correct.
We have, and again, at the end of the day, the upstairs unit will have two bedrooms and two bathrooms, and confirmation that the loft area in the upstairs unit shall not be utilized for bedroom/sleeping purposes, and the applicant has to, and successor applicants have to advise existing and future tenants of that restriction, and marketing efforts and leasing efforts have to affirmatively reference that restriction. And there should be, Tony, we have confirmation that there shall be two separate utility meters for water, sewer, gas, and electric, and confirmation that they're going to have a pervious lot coverage, and confirmation that they have a dorming FAR, confirmation that there's four off-street parking spaces, remember, they're losing a garage, but they still said they have four, confirmation that the concrete shall be removed from the rear and side of the property and replaced with pervious pavers, and, let's see, the grass areas shall be placed, or shall be placed along the western side of the property, and grass and paver shall be placed along the side of the property in accordance with the testimony, gutters and downstairs placed on the new roof, concrete walkway, inclusion of a new concrete walkway from the street to the front door, I'm sorry, inclusion of a note confirming that the concrete walkway from the street to the front door shall be removed and replaced with pervious pavers, air conditioner placed in the backyard area in a zoning compliant location. Now, the two dormers on the back roof are being eliminated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then I have a question mark here. Was there something about closets, or did that just sort of, didn't really have to worry about? I think-
There would be no closets in the second unit, in the second unit.
No closets-
In the loft.
In the living area. In the loft area. So no closets in the loft area. And then, no further intensification or expansion absent further approval of this board. And again, revised plans be submitted to show that the changes that were made in the waning moments of that application. So if that's acceptable, we can adopt that as modified.
Just two notes from me, I'm not sure if we needed a condition to remove the sidewalk on the east side of the house. Was retaining wall there, or wall there?
For some reason, I think I said-
I mean, I would prefer that, I don't know if we did.
My note, and we can change, but for some reason, did I have a note that said the sidewalk on the east side is going to remain concrete?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, is that still there?
He was saying the wall there. We didn't want to pull out the concrete. Yeah, he was concerned about the wall, right?
Yep.
Is that what you want, Tony, or?
I would prefer pervious, pervious, pervious pavers, but I don't think we pushed that in.
Okay. Right? Pretty much. We let it go because of the wall.
Yeah, and I don't even know about the closet in my attic. I mean, you have a, you have a bathroom up there, you're going to need it later, so I don't know about no closet, you call that, because I have nobody to live with.
The loft, they eliminated the bathroom.
They eliminated the bathroom, making it a true loft, not any, no closets, no bath.
The bathroom wasn't located in the loft area?
Division, do you want me to take that?
Okay, there we go.
Okay, got it.
And I think they lowered the structure, too, right?
Yeah.
That's right, the height.
Yes, and-
Is that noted, Mr. Kennedy, in your?
I think it is, but confirm what we, what were we learning the height to, do you remember, people, we're going to say?
Any other applications? Legal, well?
Yeah, this one.
Oh, okay, got it. You were just asking me.
So there's no height there?
No, there was no height variance on this one.
That's the one they eliminated.
Oh, the third one.
Correct.
Okay, so if that's acceptable, we can adopt that as amended.
Motion.
Sorry.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Peralta?
Yes.
Mr. Diorio?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
All right, the third and final resolution is Lito, that's 101 Ninth Avenue, Unit 9. And again, the same things that I read in the first apply here, and the conditions of note here were, the garage shall not utilize this living space, confirmation that the second and third floors of the unit shall comply with and otherwise satisfy all prevailing Building Code and Construction Code regulations, the air conditioning condenser to be placed in a zoning compliant location. Now, I think Chuck, we had here, confirmation that the height shall not exceed 35.5 feet, is that?
Is that lower?
No, they said the divot's lower.
It's 36.5.
Okay, that's by 36.5. Confirmation that the applicants have three dedicated parking spaces for their exclusive use, fire retardant windows shall be installed on the second and third floor, and the front setback, I had confirmation that's either 19.82 feet or 19.70, I'll check that out with April, whatever the notes are, and, let's see, again, asking them, or suggesting that they review with their association and legal people about the unique property ownership in that condo complex. Were there any questions on that one?
Just, they wrote on windows, right? Is that a unit with windows?
Yes.
Yeah.
So what was it? It was fire retardant windows on the second and third floor?
It was an option, if that's an option, they could have done that, and then I think they had to go to maybe Bianchi on whether or not it worked, because it's an association, if they can install windows on the side of the house.
Okay.
Remember?
Yeah.
Right, there's a quote-unquote "corporate" one, but it's a tax line, it's not a corporate one.
Right, and then that goes to our other, hey, this is a unique situation.
Their association would grant it, and I think they could put windows in.
Okay, so we'll add that-
Subject to Mr. Kennedy.
Subject to building and construction code confirmation.
You want that to, I would tend to ask the association.
Got it.
So just FYI, if you would on that, it seemed like the applicant, the neighbors, was in favor, that there was a way for construction code purposes to allow windows to be there, but it seems, from a static point of view, to break up a full line wall and maybe look a lot better. So we were encouraging that, although we recognize it really isn't our fault to make, but if you had been here, we probably would have deferred to you to say, let's look into that, because if there could be code-compliant windows installed, let's try to do that, especially when Mr. Almeida brought up the fact that it's not truly separate properties given, you know, that, that rule is like, if my house is on a property line and your house is five foot away from there.
The resolution's three feet.
Right, and this is not-
On a property line.
Right.
These aren't property lines.
Exactly, so that's what we came up with.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, there was still a significant distance between the net structure, and there always will be, so we were sort of like, of mind to say, we should encourage, let the windows go in.
Three to five is 25% openings, you're allowed.
Right.
Five feet or more, it doesn't matter.
The property line in question is the condo property, it's the inside property.
It's not a now property line.
It's not a now property line.
You can say, okay, you're more than three feet, you're in the property.
Right, right. Yeah, let's encourage, I'd like to encourage them to do something. But we were recognizing it's not really up to us, because we have to defer to building code.
And was it, was it just more windows, or putting windows on that facade?
Putting.
Got it.
Because they only had one.
Yes, so we'll note that, if that's acceptable, we can adopt that as amended.
I'll make the motion, we approve it. Yeah, I'll say.
Hey, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Peralta?
Yes.
Mr. Luvin?
Yes.
Mr. Diorio?
Steve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
The next was Andrew Chiarisi, 208 16th Avenue. We approved this application last month. This was use variance and bulk variance approval associated with request to construct in addition to an existing two-family home. Now, there are a lot of conditions on here, I'll hit that briefly, only because of the nature of the change, modified application that came at the last minute, but the, basically, the conditions were the downstairs, confirmation that the downstairs unit, once renovated and expanded, shall only contain three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and confirmation that there should be no improvements in the upstairs unit, with the exception of we are allowing them to install a new bathroom.
Correct.
We have, and again, at the end of the day, the upstairs unit will have two bedrooms and two bathrooms, and confirmation that the loft area in the upstairs unit shall not be utilized for bedroom/sleeping purposes, and the applicant has to, and successor applicants have to advise existing and future tenants of that restriction, and marketing efforts and leasing efforts have to affirmatively reference that restriction. And there should be, Tony, we have confirmation that there shall be two separate utility meters for water, sewer, gas, and electric, and confirmation that they're going to have a pervious lot coverage, and confirmation that they have a dorming FAR, confirmation that there's four off-street parking spaces, remember, they're losing a garage, but they still said they have four, confirmation that the concrete shall be removed from the rear and side of the property and replaced with pervious pavers, and, let's see, the grass areas shall be placed, or shall be placed along the western side of the property, and grass and paver shall be placed along the side of the property in accordance with the testimony, gutters and downstairs placed on the new roof, concrete walkway, inclusion of a new concrete walkway from the street to the front door, I'm sorry, inclusion of a note confirming that the concrete walkway from the street to the front door shall be removed and replaced with pervious pavers, air conditioner placed in the backyard area in a zoning compliant location. Now, the two dormers on the back roof are being eliminated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then I have a question mark here. Was there something about closets, or did that just sort of, didn't really have to worry about? I think-
There would be no closets in the second unit, in the second unit.
No closets-
In the loft.
In the living area. In the loft area. So no closets in the loft area. And then, no further intensification or expansion absent further approval of this board. And again, revised plans be submitted to show that the changes that were made in the waning moments of that application. So if that's acceptable, we can adopt that as modified.
Just two notes from me, I'm not sure if we needed a condition to remove the sidewalk on the east side of the house. Was retaining wall there, or wall there?
For some reason, I think I said-
I mean, I would prefer that, I don't know if we did.
I, my note, and we can change, but for some reason, did I have a note that said the sidewalk on the east side is going to remain concrete?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is that, is that still there?
He was saying the wall there. We didn't want to pull out the concrete.
Yeah, he was concerned about the wall, right?
Is that what you want, Tony, or?
I would prefer pervious, pervious, pervious pavers, but I don't think we pushed that in.
Okay. Pretty much, we let it go because of the wall.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't even know about the closet in my attic. I mean, you have, you have a bathroom up there, you're going to need it later, so I don't, we push it aside.
And what I, what I would also say is, and I say this respectfully, because if the board, and I have no idea if they're going to approve the application or not, but if they approve the application, and there's things that you, additional relief you need that are not on here, that's only going to cause you angst, delay, cost, and time, and frustration later on. So I know it's frustrating now, but as Mr. Gray was sort of saying, it's sort of, if you're going to get it done, and again, I have no idea if the application is going to be approved or not, but if it is approved, you don't want to have it to come back later on.
Is there any way we could cover the bathroom part of the issue, as far as putting this bathroom in? We covered that tonight?
I don't think we'd be able to-
I tried sharing out the variance.
I don't think we'd be able to get to a, I don't think we'd be able to get to a vote on that, but I'm open, if the board is, to hear, you know, a little more about what you're planning to do. I don't know, I don't think it's going to help in terms of, we're not going to be able to vote. I personally just like to hear, what is the necessity of a full bathroom in a loft area above garage, not a non-finished, not even- Okay, so with that, let's, let's agree then, or we'll, we will allow them to do their presentation, but we're not, we, we're agreeing that we're not going to give the board on this tonight, we're going to give that information. I will not vote, based on the fact.
But is everybody open to hearing him present? Yes, do I hear yeses? Yes, yes, okay, yes. Okay, Mr. Day. Yes, but we will not vote.
Okay, yeah, so basically, they, they have a need for a bathroom, and they have detached garage. He has, obviously, he does, does work in a garage, and it's just convenience for the homeowner to have, to have even a bathroom, you know, in that garage.
So, Mr. Day, and again, not to put you on the spot, and I know you're trying to do not only represent them, but represent yourself as a builder, and represent potentially what would have been their land use attorney, that maybe they would have had a good idea in bringing one here to make sure everything was in order before they came here, but are you familiar with the idea of positive and negative criteria relative to a request for variance? Well, I understand how that would be positive criteria for that individual to have a gap through in the garage, but I don't know how it would be positive criteria for any, for anyone else, and, you know, the negative criteria would be clear, that, you know, you're potentially making it a domicile, a dwelling, by adding a full bathroom to it. Regardless of what promises might be made, that they'll never use it that way, that's an unenforceable promise, so.
Can I ask you a clarification? What kind of variance are we looking for here? This isn't a use variance, though, right?
I believe, Ted, this is a use variance, because technically, under our ordinance, Ted, a garage has to be for storage of vehicles, or maybe storage. So in terms of your review letter, garages are for storage of vehicles, and living space is not permitted in the garage, and I guess you take the position that if you put a bathroom in there, that's living space?
It's not permitted, either.
Okay, okay. So that's, so they need a use variance to put a bathroom in a garage?
I don't consider a bathroom, a head bathroom in a garage, as living space.
It's full bathroom.
It's a full bathroom?
Three floor.
That's a good story.
Okay, so that, it is a use variance.
So would half-bath, do you use there as a better option, or something that we're going to?
It's, it's a better option, yeah.
Would half-bath require variance also?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So you know-
I know it's a time we built the, like you say, it was a time we built the garage.
It's all good. I, I, I.
And that survey you had was updated.
All we know is what we have in front of us tonight, right? Like, the other things that happened before, this should be reflective of, right? Like, if it was a current survey, then probably little to no questions. But this survey is dated two thousand and three, and, you know, you're acknowledging that the garage didn't exist, and it's drawn in on this particular plan. But then nothing is really reflective to show what the garage did to change the numbers that typically be on this.
The survey was updated when we did the garage, and it looks like as a typo, they should have put a current date. When we did the garage, you know, the work authors is the survey, it's up to me, it's showing the garage.
But there's no driveway on it.
You indicate, right, as, as Mr. Almeda said, you had indicated that the papers lead up into the garage, but the survey does not show that.
This says eight hundred and five square feet of papers to be removed. But today, the papers go straight into the garage, and it's not shown on here at all.
Mr. Day, this is no reflection upon you or the average. We need a location survey to... It would have been nice to know that sooner because I probably could have had that ready to wait for too much for this. You know, so I just go back to them, you know, to understand it.
So, obviously, and again, the burden's on you to bring to the board what they need. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that you want to carry this so that you can get more information on, on the plans, so that you can have a more fully review. And I'm assuming...
I would, I would defer to the judgment of all of the board members, not just my choice, man, when it comes to that, whether or not she given, given what, you know, what's the issue.
Right. And if, if it is adjourned, they would do it presumably without requiring you to re-notice, so you don't have to do the certified letters again. Is that the feeling of the board?
I take fault.
Every time we do something like this, and we don't have all the information, it bites us. So I don't, we push out the secret.
And what I, what I would also say is, and I say this respectfully, because if the board, and I have no idea if they're going to approve the application or not, but if they approve the application, and there's things that you, additional relief you need that are not on here, that's only going to cause you angst, delay, cost, and time and frustration later on. So I know it's frustrating now, but as Mr. Greg was sort of saying, it's sort of, if you're going to get it done, and again, I have no idea if the application is going to be approved or not, but if it is approved, you don't want to have it to come back later on.
Is there any way we could cover the bathroom part of the issue as far as putting this bathroom in? We covered that tonight?
I don't think we'd be able to, I don't think we'd be able to get to a, I don't think we'd be able to get to a vote on that. But I'm open, if the board is, to hear, you know, a little more about what you're planning to do. I don't know, I don't think it's going to help in terms of, we're not going to be able to vote.
I personally just like to hear, what is the necessity of a full bathroom and a loft area above garage? Not a non-finished, not even, not...
Okay, so with that, let's, let's agree then, or we'll, we will allow them to do representation, but we're not, we, we're agreeing that we're not going to give the board on this tonight to get that information.
I will not vote based on the fact.
But is everybody open to hearing him present? Yes, do I hear yeses? Yes, yes, okay, yes. Okay, Mr. Day. Yes, but we will not vote.
Okay. Yeah, so basically, they, they have a need for a bathroom and a detached garage. He has, obviously he does, does work in a garage and just convenience for the homeowner to have, to have a leave a bathroom, you know, in that garage.
So, Mr. Day, and again, not to put you on the spot, and I know you're trying to do, not only represent them, but represent yourself as a builder and represent potentially what would have been their land use attorney, that maybe they would have had a good idea of bringing one here to make sure everything was in order before they came here. But are you familiar with the idea of positive and negative criteria relative to our request for variance?
I'm not familiar with that, right.
Well, I understand how that would be positive criteria for that individual to have that through the garage, but I don't know how it would be positive criteria for, for any, for anyone else. And, you know, the negative criteria would be clear, that, you know, you're potentially making it a domicile, a dwelling, by adding a full bathroom to it. Regardless of what promises might be made that they'll never use it that way, that's an unenforceable promise. So...
Can I ask you a clarification? What kind of variance are we looking for here? This isn't a use variance, though, right? I believe, Ted, this is a use variance because technically, under our ordinance Ted, a garage has to be for storage of vehicles.
Correct.
Or maybe storage. So in terms of your review letter, garages are for storage of vehicles, and living space is not permitted in the garage. And I guess you take the position that if you put a bathroom in there, that's living space?
It's not permitted either.
Okay. Okay. So that's, so they need a use variance to put a bathroom in a garage?
I don't consider a bathroom, a head bathroom in a garage as living space.
It's a full bathroom.
It's a full bathroom?
Three four.
Okay, so that, it is a use variance.
So would half a bathroom, do you use there as a better option? Are you, something that the board goes to...
It's, it's, it's a better option, yeah.
Would half a bathroom require a variance also?
Oh, yeah.
So you know, so you'd have to come back whether you're looking for half a full bathroom.
Am I just spending my bills here? We waited like a year for this.
What is the garage currently being used for?
It's, well, like I said, it uses as a workspace, and it has some storage upstairs.
So it looked like it has, it's been dormant, right? Like, there's windows, it's, what's upstairs? Is that finished space?
It's just empty space, yeah.
It's not finished?
Uh, it's, they, they finished it, but it's, they basically use it for storage.
Is there heat, is there heat outside?
Uh, I don't think so.
No heat in the garage? Yeah, we would need a different room. So you're just looking for a bathroom there for convenience of the homeowner? That's it?
Yeah.
But no benefit to the neighbors, anybody else? Like, I think you're going to have to come back to play some positive criteria that, other than convenience to the homeowner that happens to be in the garage and wants to not walk twenty feet to his house, like, we're going to need that, I think.
Is this twelve months a year use?
The house, um...
No, the garage, the garage, the bathroom in the garage.
I believe so.
And then would be heat, right? Okay, so I think obviously there's, we have some incomplete information. I mean, the views would have to be absolute, you know, we're putting a bathroom in, it's going to be used twelve months a year, and we do plan to add heat. You know, there's going to have to be a much more, you know, confirmed testimony that we can go on in addition to an updated site plan. So it's really in your hands if you choose to come back. But I can tell you, creating what would appear to be a new additional separate dwelling, you know, with the potential for it to become that, you know, in violation of, you know, what, what could be permissible, you know, it would be, it would be a tough ask. I don't know, I, I can't speak to how the other board members might be...
How some of the neighbors have asked if it's been approved in their garage?
Uh, each, I'll use Mr. Kennedy, he's taught me well over the years, each application stands and falls on its own merit. There's extenuating circumstances for each one, different conditions, so any precedent that may have happened is not relevant to this particular application. But it would certainly help, you know, if there was, you know, an attorney, an attorney and a well-prepared case that, that took into account the positive and negative criteria that would allow us to grant that variance. But, you know, we don't have that right now. So I just think we're very incomplete at this stage.
So the question would be, at what point do you want to come back? And I know the answer might be as soon as possible, but it just, you're going to have to get some of the plans completed. So that might be, April, when would be the next hearing day? If they could get plans completed?
May twenty-third.
So, is there room on the agenda for that thing?
Yes.
Do you want to come back May twenty-third?
Yeah, why don't you book me for, for that, if I could book you? I'll let you know in the next week or so. I mean, it sounds like we're not going to give you variance.
Well, I mean, in fairness, you have to put, you know, the applicant has the burden to testify and present testimony to, to solicit them to say, hey, you've proven your case, you've proven the standards, the variance standards are X, Y, Z, and you've proven them. So that's what you're going to have to do. And you can call April and she'll move me in, and we can have a greater private discussion on, on what some of those standards are. And so I just need to ask for the record, do you, on behalf of the owner, consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act?
So, yes.
Okay. And what we'll do, Mr. Chairman, if we could have a motion to carry this to May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, six o'clock P M., without the need for any further public notice?
With one condition, that, that all of the information would be supplied to our clerk and, and to our zoning officer in advance.
At least ten days in advance it has to be submitted, that's why...
So that would be May thirteenth to, to these folks, so that they could tell them it looks like we've got everything that we needed to avoid, again, you know, why, your comment, why didn't we know sooner? You know, if we would avoid that for the May meeting, if you get this to them by May thirteenth.
So we have a motion to carry?
I'll make that one. Second?
On the record.
All right. I, I do want to make a comment before we adjourn this application, too, that, you know, the, the burden to submit a completed application is on the applicant, not upon our borough staff or our borough team. So if during the course of this, we discover something of the absent, it, it comes back into the applicant's hands. It's not a fault of, of anyone in our construction office or in order in our clerk's office. Okay? Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. Day.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, that, second application is State of Endeavour, Irwin, three seventeen, eighth Avenue. By the way, I, I would think you have a hold on the table. Yeah.
Mr. Diorio, three forty-four, and Mr. Gray, the South Town.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is the Irwin application. And I guess we should ask for the record, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? Okay, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So again, my opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight. We will spare in Ted Bianchi, our construction officer and zoning officer. Ted, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide, that it could be the truth of best your knowledge to help you guys? Okay? And we will mark to the record what we, as a board, have before us. A one is development application package, and that's dated January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And A two is going to be the Borough of Belmar, Mile and Land Use zoning permit denial form, and that's dated December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, slash December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. A three is a boundary and topographic survey prepared by Landmark Surveying and Engineering, and that's dated February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. A four is a plot plan with grading details prepared by Landmark, and that's dated September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, consisting of two sheets. And A five is the architectural floor plans and elevations prepared by Tom Peterson, Architect, and that's dated December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and that's consisting of five sheets. And, boy, I think that's it, right? So this is Tim Milton, he'll be representing the applicants tonight, and good evening, sir.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Kennedy, members of the board. As for the record, Timothy Milton, on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Irwin. Mr. Irwin is here tonight. We're here tonight to pay permission to build your home at the three seventeen, three seventeen, eighth Avenue. There's two variances, a requested, one is for building height. I believe the denial notice refers to thirty feet, the variance is actually thirty-seven feet. You'll hear from Mr. Peterson, who's an architect and a planner. The property is just in the A E flood zone, it's actually one, the old property over, not a flood zone. Unfortunately, it's in a flood zone. The idea is to have, because you can't have a basement, is to have an elevated area, so for storage, it's not a basement. And that, that's the cause of the height issue. The second variance relates to the distance of the detached garage and the existing pool in the back door. And that, and that all being said, introduce Mr. Peterson, provide his credentials, and go from there. Because I know we're going to be the one you...
Sure. And, Mr. Chairman, just one thing to the record, I spoke to Mr. Milton today. As you're aware, a height variance can be a bulk variance or a use D variance, depending on the nature of, it's usually, it's a ten foot or ten percent deviation or less, it means a C variance, if it's more, it's a D variance, and that affects the standards. So, Tim, just for the record, we'll hear architects say it later on, but it looks like this is a bulk C variance, thirty-five feet allowed, thirty-seven feet proposed.
Yeah, thirty-seven feet proposed.
So we have the bulk C, got it. So, Mr. Peterson, good evening, and whilst, would you just state your name and business address?
Sure. Tom Peterson, I'm the architect, I'm the project, also doing some planning and testimony. The address is six Country Lane, Howell County, Missouri.
All right. If you could just raise your right arm. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide could be the truth of best your knowledge to help you guys?
Yes.
And for the record, you're testifying as a licensed, certified, up-to-date with all your credentials, architect and planner?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. You know, providing it up top? Yeah. So I've got a couple of other things that I'm going to show you, but I want to introduce these as evidence so that April has them. Some photographs, an aerial photograph, and then a color render.
All right, so let's just give the first one. We're going to mark this A six, and what is A six? An aerial photograph, okay. Yeah, we'll just do it, and then we'll mark the rest as A seven, and what are the A's? Five photographs. Five photographs.
And then...
Just five photographs of what? The property?
Existing houses.
Okay. And then, and hold on, with regard to those A seven, five photographs, were those pictures taken by you or your office?
Yes.
And roughly when?
Uh, earlier for that two blocks.
Okay, so that would make it a realistic portrayal of what is this on site? And April will mark them A seven, A, B, C, D, and A.
Then also, we have a color rendering.
So A eight is going to be an illustrated rendering of...
The proposed new house.
Proposed new home, prepared by...
Prepared by Mile office.
Okay, is there a date on that?
Uh, no.
All right. And you know that your case today is fully, you know, two thousand and twenty-four.
And then one last thing, a plot plan from Landmark.
Right.
That has one of the numbers corrected on the...
So this is an updated plot plan?
Yes.
So we'll say updated plot plan, prepared by Landmark. What's the date on it?
I think, I think today's in April eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four, and has a corrected zoning chart on it.
All right.
I've also got just two of the, these are exactly what I've just given to April, so sometimes it's easy for everybody to discover this up here.
Let me say this. I do have something that I'd like to, let's try to get this squared away before we get too deep into it. It's better to get it out of the way of her, so it doesn't be either stated in error or the generable we're looking at. But all of the information we have here shows thirty-eight feet is being requested, and we heard over here thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven is what we're asking for, so...
So why does it say thirty-eight proposed on this, on this...
That was an error by Landmark.
Can we correct all the errors then? Let's go through the errors, because this is saying thirty-eight on, on the, it's also seventy. So for the record, even though thirty-eight is what was proposed, they're stating now that the actual requested height is thirty-seven.
Got it.
Okay, and that applies to both this, this chart on, I don't know, whatever it's you have that I was talking about.
Sure.
I mean, it's...
Now, this is thirty-seven, not thirty-eight, and on the, um...
A, A two hundred. It's A two hundred.
A, A two hundred, the large hoopla diagrams, thirty-seven feet, so they're basically not...
So all plans will be, if, if the application's approved, all plans will be revised?
Thirty-eight, thirty-seven, they asked for.
Right. And if that's approved, that, you could make that a condition for resolution as well. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Let's just get that squared away, just because we saw the discrepancy, and want to be sure we don't continue with it. Okay, good.
How about we do this? Go through your exhibits, and then we should delve into the current issues, because there are the various...
You're looking for height and then proximity pool to the accessory structure.
Right.
Other than that, there's no other record?
No.
Right, okay.
So let me just go over very quickly what we, you know, what we started and where we're going. I know you said I only had to have time clock to talk, so...
I think your budget is nine forty.
I'm going to read that. This is an existing property, it's over on Eighth Avenue, I'm sure you've seen it, it's across the, the street from the park and the playground over there in the lake. It's, the existing structure is a, almost like a split level, certainly not what we would consider a seashore type of a home. As well, as Tim just said, this is in a flood zone. It just clips the property, but that does make it a flood zone compliant or flood zone required to be compliant home. So what we're proposing is that. The existing home as it is right now, as you can see, is not flood zone compliant, it's not compliant with a lot of the codes. There's some space, living space down here, which is below the flood level. Our proposal is that what we're going to be doing is tearing the house down, rebuilding it, and then putting in a detached garage in that. The property and the lot is compliant. We comply with the, the area, we comply with the width, we comply with the depth. To that end, we're not asking for any variances for setbacks, we're going to comply with all of those, we're not asking for any variances for coverage, we're going to comply with that.
In effect, we're eliminating the front yard setback, the side yard, the backyard side yard, and the, the shares, Dr. Block.
Yeah, so there's a couple of existing non-conformances that we're going to be eliminating. The new, the new structure will comply. As I said, we are in a flood zone, so everything we do has to comply with the flood zone requirements for construction. We're in the A E, A E ten there. As such, we can't have a basement, so the crawl space area, and these are just some photographs, you can see, here's the aerial photograph, you all know exactly where it is. Here's some photographs of the existing home. And then just a couple of photographs that show kind of looking at the, the side of the front yard. So, our proposal is to build a new home, as I said, we're going to comply with all of the side yard setback, the front yard setback. Take a look at the floor plans, I'm going to get all this quickly. First floor plan, second floor plan, very typical for what we see in most homes. You've got the four bedrooms upstairs, we've got a little, small little alcove for, you know, house office, which is becoming more and more popular and common. First floor is the very typical open family area, living, dining, kitchen area. We've got some mudroom and some functional things in back. Again, because we're in a flood zone, we can't put the mechanicals down in the basement or crawl space area, so we're required to put those up here. So that's why you see a mechanical area there. There's a bathroom on that floor. We're also proposing a half-story up above, or by building code, a half of the ladder. The metrics for that comply with the housing requirements for what we can have up there at the five-foot height, as well as the building code requirements for what we can have at the seven-foot height. So all of that complies. What we are trying to do, though, is to, because we can't have a basement, we wanted to try to make that what we're calling a crawl space, get as much headroom as we can, even at that, we're, we're just under seven feet down there. If you see where the girders would be, the structure, that's going to be at about six feet. So, you know, even at my height, that's, that's starting to get a little bit strict. That space is not going to be used for anything other than typical storage that you would have. It can't be finished, it can't be used as any kind of habitable space.
I'm sorry, which space is that, you said?
What's that?
That can't be used as...
It can't be used as...
What, I'm sorry, what area were you...
This is the, the ground floor.
Got it.
Yeah. It's, it's, we're calling it a crawl space, it's a little bit more than a crawl, but it's not, it's not habitable space, it doesn't meet the building code requirement for what you would have as a space. You know, where the girders are is at about a six-foot height. But this gives the homeowners and the applicants someplace where they can store things, in addition to the garage that we have out back. There'll be an access into that from outside, but beyond that, there's no plan for anything down there. By building code, we're not allowed to have anything down there anymore. So you'll see that the exterior walls are masonry, we can't have anything that doesn't comply with flood-resistant materials down there. So if you look at the, the elevation, you see it's this space down below, you can see what, that we have the stonework down there, up to that height where the floodline is. Because we're trying to get some height down there, because we're trying to get some height up above, and because of how the height is measured, which is the average grade around which is the average grade around the house, um, to try and get that just under seven feet down there, and then to get the space up above, we're about two feet, exactly, two feet over the required height of thirty-five feet. Our, uh, our hardship here is that we're in a flood zone. We have no opportunity to take that ground level and sink it into the ground, which would help us achieve that, so...
I mean, clearly, if you were able to construct a basement, this would not even be close to the issue.
Correct. And again, technically, it's technically, we are right on the flood zone line here, so... So if you take a look at the new house, and you take a look at how we've designed it, now, we have very much a seashore style of home. I'm not gonna get into too much of the, the details of that, but if you take a look at the different roof lines, if you take a look at the different window patterns, you know, now you can see this is starting to reflect that, 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 that style of that high period of when the, when shore homes were really starting to be built here. You know, that, that twenties, that thirties, uh, and it would very much fit in with so many of the other new homes that we have in town. You know, the, uh, it, it is a short town, and this is a part of the architecture that really fits in with everything else that's going on. We've introduced some different materials here, that's also a part of that style of architecture. If you take a look at where we're exceeding, it's just a small little peak up here. So it's not, the roof line isn't done in such a way that you really feel that mass. It really is done in a way that you don't feel. And although you can't really accurately show this with a, uh, with the rendering, the house also sits up. As you get closer and closer to the street, across the street, the house is above that, but the, but we have to measure the height, the average grade around the house itself, so the apparent height of the house is gonna look less than, than being that far over self. You can see we've also introduced some different materials and all that. Uh, we think this is, of course, a much better solution, a much better aesthetic than, than what's there existing now. The house and the property also has an existing pool in back. But the owners would like to get a detached garage, which is, you know, very common throughout town. In order to push it back and be able to at least try to swing a car into that space there, we had to push this garage back as far as we could. There's an existing shed there now, which is non-compliant in terms of setbacks, but we're holding the back of the garage to that distance from the, uh, from the pool, which is just under five feet. Um, the, uh... The only other solution to that would be to try to start pulling the garage closer to the house, which would make it very difficult to pull into the garage in terms of how you would have access to it, uh, as well as then start to violate the distance that we're supposed to have between, uh, the garage and the house. So we felt that doing this was the best solution. Uh, we're also, uh, clearing up, like I said, some of the setbacks between the, um, the shed and the property line, uh, and turning this into a normal environment. The drive is simply a garage, there's no habitable space there, uh, as you just heard from the previous performance application. There's no bathroom in there, there's no habitable space up above, that we are pulled downstairs to the attic area, that the height complies. The only thing that we did was... Take a look at the garage elevations. We put a couple of dormers in the front. And the reason for that was, once again, the aesthetic of how we want that for a look. So again, the look of the garage, we're trying to make it feel as, uh, as much as, uh, in compliance with the house. So we have a couple of dormers up there, but I don't wanna construe that in any way that's meant to be spaced. In fact, if you take a look at the ceiling height of the garage itself, which is a little over nine feet, and the overall height of the, uh, the garage itself, there is no real room up there that you could make that habitable anyway, so...
What's, what's the size of the garage?
Uh, the garage is... But the garage complies with the, um... Oh yeah, twenty by twenty, so, four hundred and forty square feet, which is what we're at.
So room enough for a car, I assume, and a wall or two, twice?
So, I'll just go over some real quick plan and testimony, this is kind of more technical stuff, but, um, you know, under NJAC, uh, forty color, fifty-five feet, seventy C, one and two, these are C variances, this is not a use variance, we are well under the thirty-eight and a half, as Kevin said, the ten percent above allowable, that will throw us into a, uh, D variance. Uh, you know, the C variance, there's a C one variance, there's a C two variance. C one is the hardship, so we have to show that there's something that makes us have to be this way. The fact that we're in a flood zone is what contributes to the height variance there. The fact that the pool is existing, where it exists on the property, uh, is what, um, brings us to the setback variance to the garage. There's also the C two variance, which is the substantial benefit. Uh, that may be even more telling here in that the substantial benefit is that now we get a more functional use of a house here. We're eliminating quite a few variances in terms of construction, uh, wind load, uh, the current energy code requirements. But just as important as all of that is flood zone construction compliance. Uh, if you take a look at the, the house that we're proposing versus the, um, the existing structure, it's very much a benefit to the neighborhood, it's a benefit to the neighbors, and it's a benefit to the town itself. With really no apparent violation of the zoning ordinance, there's nothing here that looks out of place, or that looks too high, or, um, uh, looks like it's not something that belongs in the neighborhood, so...
Is your point, if you can put the elevation up again? The, the two feet is really that peak right there?
It's just a, it's just a little peak here. So if you take a look at, you know, a, a part of the charm of, uh, seashore style architecture, is the play. The different, uh, the different roof lines, the different materials that we have here. Part of the house that's out the most is well below that thirty-seven feet. It's the main ridge that's behind that, and that really is not a predominant part of the elevation.
If the variances were granted, would there be any detriment to the surrounding neighborhood?
No, surrounding property, not at all. This doesn't pose any detriment, this doesn't pose any, um, adverse conditions for the surrounding neighbors. Uh, as you know, we're improving a couple of the setbacks that we're just now, and making them conform, so, uh, there's nothing I hear in the city whatsoever that would be in any way adverse to the neighbors.
Not in a lot of light area of the space for the neighbors? House faces northeast, correct?
Yes.
In terms of block, they might have a little impact.
Right. And across the street is that beautiful park and playground and the lake right behind it, too, so we're kind of excited because this has a, this gets a nice, a nice view, a nice vision for everybody.
Besides all those things you talked about, for C two aesthetically, this would be more pleasing if it was there.
Yes.
So you're done with your, you're done with...
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Should that open up to the, uh, to the questions, um, on the board, the structural designer down there?
Um, the only question that I would have is all the damp spouts and everything, where's all the water going?
I'm, I'm sorry, what's that?
All the damp spouts from the runoff on the roof and everything, where, where is that all going?
Yep, we will control all the water on site, uh, we'll work with TEG on if we need an underground, um, uh, water management system. It's usually difficult in flood zones, but we'll, we'll work out that with TEG, but, uh, whatever TEG requires in terms of stormwater management, everything will be, will be dealt with on site.
So anybody have to answer? Yes, Miranda wants to speak.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I want to put up your rights of the resident.
So I have a clarification question, um, I thought that if you were in a flood zone, the height, building height was measured by feet above base floor elevation and not grade.
The pressure from the...
So in your testifying, you said something about measuring from the, the ground, I thought.
Well, so, yeah, the aver, yeah, the average grade around the house is at that base level. That's how close we are to, to where it's, where it is.
Base floor is ten.
Base floor is ten, and we're, um, we're like, we're like at a nine, and we're right...
So then you don't have to, you don't really have to be that high, it's just that you want space underneath the air.
You don't want to have any storage underneath the house.
Okay.
Because we can't go, we have, we can't go below elevation ten.
Okay.
So we went and dug in a foot, elevation nine, and we violated your flood ordinance, which is a good order, but it's actually a little rigorous and even a deep bit.
Right, so it comes down to you need to be able to store stuff.
That's right.
And you need seven feet to be able to store stuff.
Correct.
Correct. Cause they don't have it.
Cause there's a pool table in the basement.
The owner was saying, how do I judge how big this is, what kind of size it is and all that, so, uh, but you know, this is not gonna be, as I said, in this testimony, this is gonna be a part of the resolution.
Yeah.
There is no, uh, it's for storage.
Right.
There's no habitable space, no, uh, party rooms or anything like that.
Just to be clear, I mean, it, so, you all understand this, so if I walk into this, uh, what we call crawl space, cause you can't, you don't have that face. There's gonna be girders at, at six feet?
So if the, if the height to the floor structure is seven feet, but we have girders where those, where those have to, have to be, those, those girders are roughly a foot, so at those points, you're down at six feet.
So if I'm walking across the basement without six feet, I'll be, I'll be, I'll have boots off or something, I'll just go to six foot. I'm gonna have to dug in.
Yes.
So it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a place where you go, you wanna go and do it.
No, no, as well, um, you know, where that, where that floor elevation is, so we have to keep it... I hate to take so much time, but this is important. Tell, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you, when you, when you're constructing in a flood zone, there's all kinds of, um, issues that you have to deal with, with the height of the floor, even if it's a crawl space floor, you have to deal with those things, too. The front of the house is at about elevation nine, and that's where we have to keep that ground slab at, because we can't have it too far out. So if you go to the back, where we're at about elevation ten, the floor is, is just slightly below the grade there. The reason for that, the logic for that is a construction thing, not a zoning thing. You have to be able to allow the water to flow in and out. You can't have floor, that's why you can't have a basement, you can't have it below. But the code also says they don't want the floor to be above that either, because now you've got a hydrostatic pressure against that, so... That's why we have the, the crawl space elevation is at nine, and that, that is what gets us to the, uh, to the height. But the height is measured from TEG, uh, by TEG from ten, and that's what gets us at the thirty-seven foot height.
Uh, second question, so the height of the attic area, uh, the ceiling height, is it thirty-seven foot, or what's that?
If you take a look at the ceiling in the attic, I know you guys see this all the time. So there's two measurements that we have to be concerned with. One is the zoning requirement, which is the five-foot height. And that's why when you go up into these attics, you see a lot of them, you have the walls come up to five feet, and then they pitch up from there. The seven-foot height is where we have to measure for the building code. You don't care about building code, but we have to, because the building code determines what fire rating for the house would have. So we also comply with the seven foot, too. But that's, that's where you measure, but then there's a little part above that that can go to eight feet. So if you were to, this house was constructed and you were to go up here, it's nine feet wide at the seven-foot height, and then it pitches up another foot, and you've got, you know, roughly five or six foot section where it's at the eight-foot height. What the building code says is, we just wanna know what is at the seven-foot height, because that then determines what fire rating the house is and is probably they have right.
No, I was just trying, I'm trying to understand where we're, but then you got the second floor is eight-foot high ceiling.
Yes.
You have the first floor nine-foot high ceiling.
Correct.
So is there any discussion on eight-foot ceilings there, or...
I'm sorry, say it again, the first floor is nine foot?
First floor is nine foot, second floor is eight foot. Nine foot, as I'm sure you've seen, is an incredibly typical height for a first floor area. Why is that? First floor is now, have become more and more open, people like open kitchen areas, they like open family areas, they like open dining areas. It's different than it used to be so many years ago, when people had the smaller spaces. Eight-foot ceiling would feel, uh, compressed in that area. I would take a foot out of the top floor before I took a foot out of that nine-foot, I don't know.
Would you take a foot off the top floor, then?
If, if, if I had to choose between, I don't think that we should have to either way, but if I had to choose, I would take it off the top.
I mean, you're out of compliance, thirty-seven and thirty-five, and you've got an extra, a, a foot extra where you don't need it, comply with the building code, and, I don't know. I'm just trying to make it more desirable. Think about it. Uh, next question I had is on the garage. It's a two-door garage, two-door garage, three-bake garage?
Yes.
But the plot plan shows, or, I'm just, the, uh, survey shows, looks like two garage strips. Is that, is your driveway gonna be stripped, like, stripped strips?
Yeah.
So we'll go down on the abreviations. Yeah, so it, it only looks like you'd be able to get in maybe to the first bay, the car.
And that's probably how they're gonna use it, the second bay is more than likely gonna be, um, uh, you know, yard equipment and things like that. I, I, you know, I know that they have a smaller sports car that they might just pull it off the lawn and store it over the winter, but that'd be about it.
I don't think you'd be able to get in there with that stairwell there for the deck, that's a... That's, yeah, so, uh, my question then is, you're not counting that as parking space, the two, the, the second bay?
Well, we have parking spaces stacked, but...
No. Okay, so you can form the parking pad without that second bay?
Yes.
All right, I think that was all my questions.
Yes, a lot of the questions that I was gonna ask, one of the other questions I had was, uh, utilities, will they be underground? Is it possible to get them underground?
Uh, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna, should add the utilities underground, yes.
Mr. Peterson, beautiful looking as always, and Mr. Wilson, like I said, you're a duller, because some of these are... Can you educate me on what the requirement is? What is the elevation that we have to be at to start building, if the base floor elevation is there?
The base floor elevation is ten. The first floor is supposed to be at twelve. That's where, that's the minimum it has to be.
Two feet above?
Two feet above the base floor elevation. There's a reason for that. You'd say, well, if the base floor elevation is ten, just have the first floor at ten. Well, you have a foot of structure, and nobody wants to put that in harm's way. Then, you have what's called the freeboard, which is another foot, a lot of people like, uh, a couple of feet. Some towns now are starting to require, uh, two feet and even three feet of freeboard, because there you have ductwork, you have other, uh, plumbing and things like that, and the flood requirements are getting stricter, less strict. So you see, uh, with the latest FEMA map that came out, more areas are in a flood zone than not, and they're starting to reassess what those flood elevations are. Who knows what the future's gonna be, but I can tell you that this will never go to AE, anything less than ten. In twenty years, this could be an AE twelve, so that's why you see a lot of towns are requiring it to be more than that. Any way that helps with their, uh, uh, their flood assessment with the state, but a lot of homeowners aren't that way, though.
The, in simplest form, base floor elevation is at the average for the property, and I see there's a big variation in this lot, uh, from the rear to the front. What is the slab?
Slab is at nine. That matches the height in the front.
The slab in the lower level is at nine?
Correct. And that matches the elevation.
In the front right corner?
If you take a look, we're at about nine feet in the front, and then, then actually pitches down a little.
Just a bunch of questions. Fifteen steps to get into the first floor elevation, so maybe three up and then twelve down.
Yes.
The driveway strips, concrete, appurvious layers, and what's in between?
We have it as concrete with grass in between.
Okay, and you need, you're slightly under the appurvious coverage.
Correct.
Do you think it's a necessity to have a walkway from the driveway strip to the rear stairs?
No.
I'm sorry.
Walkway from where you're in a parking car on the driveway strips to the rear stairs. There's a landing there at the bottom of the stair, and then you have a five or a six-foot grass area. It's safe, it's safe to assume nobody wants to go concrete, grass, concrete stairs, right?
We talked about it, we, we decided that we, that they didn't want that, they didn't need it.
Is there a concrete pad underneath the deck or?
No.
There is not. Shed, stays, goes?
Goes.
I noted, and this is from Mr. Bianchi, when he, at the moment, I think the appurvious paper details incorrect on the plans. I'm not positive, but it might be, I think the only place you have that is in front of the driveway, or, pardon me, in front of the garage, a little bit of cavers there, right?
Yep.
Check that. My recollection, and maybe I'm, I'm looking at this wrong, Mr. Peterson, is you can't have an open stairwell from the house into the first floor grade. Open stairwell from the basement, we'll call it, I can't call it that, from the slab into the house.
Oh, on the bottom floor?
Yes.
If that's a zoning.
I don't know if that's a zoning thing, I, I thought that was a FEMA thing.
No.
I'm not positive, but I'd show any.
Ted, is that, is that a zoning issue?
No.
Yeah, you can do that. Yeah.
Probably every house in Bayhead has a staircase that goes from the basement to the large floor in the house.
But Tony.
Ted, you're saying Bayhead, Point Pleasant Beach, having, I've visited there for thirty years since Sandy, everything that looks like this, there's no access at all, except for one back door.
So, what, what?
No, no stair inside, no garage, no.
I asked, I asked Mr. Peterson, is it a FEMA thing or it's a bell mark thing? If it's a bell mark thing, that's one that, I want to know if it's a FEMA related or.
It isn't, the only.
So, if we get a flood and it's elevation sixteen, the water goes up in, in the house through the stairwell?
As well as through the windows.
Yeah, that's fair, fair.
So, okay, let me, but, let me tell you so that you know for next time.
Yes, please.
So.
There's not many of these that have come personally with myself in front of the board yet, and this, you know, we can see we're headed in this direction with this.
So, we have an awful lot of these that we're working on in Seagird, Advanced Waters, are also in flood zones. The requirement, the FEMA requirement, the building code requirement though, is that any material that's below the flood, so, anything that's below that ten feet, has to be a water-resistant material, so you couldn't have sheet rock or anything like that. You see an awful lot of homes, and now you, let's go down to Long Beach Island, where you see these homes are elevated, and they actually park underneath, and that is well within the flood zone, but you see within that space, they have stairs from inside that lower level up to the first floor. So, there's no building code requirement, unless that was a zoning requirement, there's nothing.
And this home is built on block, not tiles?
Uh, well, yes, it's going to be block, spread footings, concrete stephoms.
Um, and again, for my own clarification and the clarification of the board, you had made a comment earlier, and this is a FEMA-related question. Are you allowed to, just for our reference, maybe not pertinent to this application per se, but can you hang air handler condensers in a unfinished space if they are above BFA?
Yes, that's a good question. What FEMA says is, once you're above that flood elevation, you can have, you can have outlets up high, you know, you could mount a refrigerator on the ceiling or something like that, but yes, you can.
Right, and is that that two-foot requirement probably? Max height of the roof, just for clarification, forty-seven is the elevation that's on the plans, not the height, right?
Correct, so it's forty-seven feet and ten feet is the base flood elevation that we have to measure from.
You conforming with side yards, FX?
Yep.
It's a C variance, not a D variance, and building height. Any consideration, I don't know if this is just me, I'm sorry if I'm taking up too much time, but if you're biased of questions, then maybe I'll throw it right out a bit. Rotation of the garage, in other words, pull in right to, all right, you hate it, Mark.
We were not, yes.
I'm not an architect, that's for sure, or an engineer, but.
We did look at some of those things, it just doesn't make sense on this property, and then we looked at, could we move the garage over and then pull it that way? That takes up almost any usable space in the backyard as it is, and it's, it's not, it, it's not a big space anyway. And we've got the pool here, which is a nice pool, and it's existing, and we didn't want to say, well, take that out, replace the pool and all that, so that's why we came up with this.
And I was going there anyway, so I'm going to bring it up, because you have brought it up, but I'm going there with it. Why not consideration to pulling the garage underneath the block?
We had talked about that, and the client was, would rather have that space for storage than, than put a garage underneath as well.
Seventeen hundred square feet stored, Mr. Peterson, these whole lot.
And also, you know, as a, as a nerdy architect, as we looked at those things and the aesthetic of it, it just didn't look like a, like a home that belonged in there.
Understandable. This will be one of the first in this municipality to the best of my knowledge.
First of what?
With this type of elevation.
Uh, well, we did see one.
Which seven feet in the crawl, it will be, no? Is anybody else aware of another one that's got a seven-foot first floor?
Yeah, there's one.
One that faces the lake has no usable space underneath, does not have any rest.
There's some down by you, is there more? Is there some houses down by you?
So, that's more flood zone than. Yeah, this lot is, in Mr. Peterson's defense, is it's elevated significantly at the rear, there's a three-foot drop-off from the rear of this property.
Yeah, it's, if you take a look, you know, you can see, we're at about six feet and seven feet at the front of the property line. It's ten feet in the back here, and then, and then goes up to eleven and more, so, it, it does have a pretty steep top.
It's a steep, that's not.
It does have a top.
Do you think, you know, honestly, there's going to be a retaining wall required somewhere along this middle of this property?
We, we have something here in the front, we've already talked to Landmark about that. Fortunately, the, once you get to the house, you're at about nine feet here and about ten feet there. A lot of that severity is in the front yard. But that also helps us with the aesthetic.
All right, um, no further questions.
It's believable.
Um, I'm still confused about what I interrupted Tony with, what you're not calling a basement.
Round four, maybe we should call it, we should call it.
Call it a crawl space.
But to me, with six, seven-foot ceilings, that's not crawl space, that's a basement, or cellar, whatever you want to call it, even, to me, again, what I said before, you, Ted said Bayhead, I've watched dozens and dozens, since I've worked at Point Pleasant Beach for all these years, of the houses getting razed after Sandy, and there is no usable all over there. That, they've got ten or twelve or thirteen stairs to their first floor, and by, and maybe this is Point Pleasant Beach's definition, they're not even allowed to put a garage under there, they're not allowed to have, you've got windows in there.
It's not a closed space, it's, it's, they're more pleasant, it's open, it's more open.
No, most of them are not. Most of them are bricked up, and they have a single door, and maybe some lights in there, but that, that's what I'm asking. To me, we'll change slightly, you've got a full flight of stairs going to that first floor, plus the three from the sidewalk. You call, you're asking for two feet, my opinion would be, drop the whole house and have a, a true crawl space. You're at, what, what you're, my definition of what you're doing is a basement, usable in some fashion, even though you're saying it's not. If you had a five-foot or a four-foot true crawl space, then you only got seven stairs to the first floor, you still got storage down there, but that proves to me it's not usable space, you've still got the same storage space, and you don't need the variance for the total height. That's basically, that's, that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, I have an issue with the height. I live on eight there, and I raised my house, and I have seven steps, and I'm at twelve feet. The house next to me was just built new, same thing, twelve feet base, flood elevation, no, true crawl space, house across the street just built, same thing. A real crawl space, basically on the slab, and I was curious, you didn't mention the aesthetics of the houses around us, because most of the houses to the left are probably twenty-eight, twenty-nine feet, probably no more than thirty. This is going to be thirty-seven, and it's going to, to me, while it's a beautiful house, it looks like a house on stilts, okay? Because I think I have the most steps on that side of the street at seven. You're at thirteen or fourteen. And I know you want storage, but you have to have flood vents in that space, don't you?
Yeah, we do.
Right, it's not shown on the diagram, there's no cutout for flood vents.
Oh, there'll be flood, that's.
Right, but what I'm saying is, what kind of storage could you put in an area with flood vents?
Oh, it's, it's not family heirlooms and things like that, yes, beach.
Right, but you have a garage with a loft there. So, you've got storage there, and when I look at the rest of the block, houses on both sides on that side of the street, I think it's out of place, and I think it's going to look like a, a monster house, height-wise compared to the other ones. And the fact that you're thirteen, fourteen, steps up makes it even more visible. And I have no problem with the, the garage, the space, but I do have a problem with the height, and, and I agree with Mr. Lubin. If you took two feet of headspace out of the crawl space, you're at thirty-five, and it's good to go, and that's my opinion.
Can you put some pumps in the basement? Whatever we're calling it.
It was something or something, because it's below.
Because it's below grade. Okay, no, everyone hit the, hit the high marks.
Okay, I have, I, I, I want to hear your, I'm sorry. Could you tell me what the measurement above sea level is, is going to be the first floor living space?
To the first floor, the height above sea level is. The first floor is at seventeen.
Seven, the first floor.
At seventeen feet above.
Seventeen feet above sea level. And you're saying the base flood elevation is ten? Then you get way. Okay. That seems high, that, that seems high. I, I know Sandy came to about thirteen and a half feet above sea level, so seventeen feet above sea level seems to be significantly higher than, you know, what I believe with the building code. You know, I, I know you don't want to go too low, but, but at the same time, you know, there is such a thing as going too high, right? So, it seems excessive to go seven feet above what you would be allowed to build without having to pay additional flood insurance, right? If that, if that first floor were at, were at twelve, right, you'd have, you'd be paying the base rate flood insurance. I think, I think between ten and twelve, your rates go slightly higher.
Yeah, we're at three feet, is that, is the.
All right, so call it thirteen, right, you're still four feet, that first floor is still four feet down from, from where you're presenting here. So, it seems like the whole reason for the height is simply just to increase the head height in, in that basement. But then, there was, I, I think you said the slab is at nine, why can't the slab be at eight?
Can't be, can't be below the grade. Correct. Your, this is a, it's.
Because this house, this house seems very elevated anyway, like, it seems like, it seems like to be quite high relative.
Your, this is very well rated, but very strict.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's already on an elevated.
We'd love to take a gap, I mean, if we thought we could, we would take that, but it, it, your, this, I believe, and we went through it many times, is very clear that the floor of ba, called basement, whatever you want to call it, cannot be above right now.
Well, all right, so, so my question is, would you guys consider lowering, taking a foot down in that basement crawl space, and foot off of the third, the, the, the half-story, the top floor, and you coming to clients?
Ted, I do, we could ask, I mean, we don't even need that. I just had a secret message from a client here. He has no problem reducing that to six feet in the basement, and will take another foot off of the roof, so he complied with that. Um, the six feet in the basement is actually five feet below structure, like I said, even I would bang my head on that. But six feet is also well below any, not that we had any intention to, but also well below the building code that you could use in for space anyway.
Appreciate the movement, we're in board questions right now, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, it's, it's great to, on the fly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See, modifying things, we'll probably have to go back around for board questions, but, but I, I just want to ensure that, and I think if in fact that change is going to be made, it's going to save two additional steps to get into the home.
Yes.
Which is huge, I, I, I mean, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen steps, I mean, that has to be a concern of the homeowner, in and out every decade, especially as you know, so. So, I would like to just quickly go around, given the fact that they're saying that they're not going to need a height variance anymore, we're modifying the plans. Are there any additional questions for the board members?
No.
Because you see, most of our questions were related to the height. No more questions, Chuck, any more?
I got one.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Peterson, just, I'm sorry, I'm being a devilish here, ten feet, twelve feet to the middle, right?
Yeah.
Ten, ten-foot BFA, or, or eighty zone, ten feet, twelve is the minimum. Is there no maximum?
No. So, if you go down to, and again, these are, you know, in, in locations where you have, well, we're working on one right now in Seagird, this is a federal thing, this isn't a township thing. They're in a flood zone where the house would have to be out of the ground, about four or five feet, but there, it's a very small lot, they have no room for parking, so we're elevating it much more above that, so they can get parking underneath. And also, just so everyone knows, the way the insurances work is that the higher you are above the BFA, your, your insurance is reduced. First of all, if you're at BFA, you get one rate, if you're below it, that's a bad rate, one foot above is one thing, two foot above is another thing, and then at three feet is when it's the lowest rate, is what most places say is the lowest rate. So, whether you're three feet or thirty feet above, so, that's why you see in a lot of municipalities, how you guys, a lot of municipalities require that, and a lot of homeowners just go for that, and more possibly.
And, and in this particular instance, now, thanks for educating us, I appreciate this, so, you know, subsequent to the application, I really do.
And, and in this particular instance, now, thanks for educating us, I appreciate this, you know, subsequent to the application, I really do. And at, at three feet, which would be the least amount of flood insurance required, would this application have the opportunity to meet the height requirement and obtain first and second floors at nine feet?
Yes.
I present that as an option to, to the.
Say it again, Tony, in just ten minutes, do I part of it?
If it was, if at three feet above base flood elevation, it might leave itself the opportunity for the first floor and the second floor to both be at nine feet, same height, and still meet.
They just, they just need to, I do ask them. Correct, I would make her a second floor, you're probably just keeping on the, on the asking. Because she's getting up to half one half story and they have them. That's how they came back down to the top. So instead of going nine, you're a second floor, they just move. The questions still remain, but they probably just keep the half story. However, you got, all right, so I do, for my question part, and then we're gonna have to open it for public questions. I'm certain that the variance relative to structures next to a pool is related to people jumping off the roof and into the pool. I mean, I zero doubt that that's the intent of the work, right? And I'm very concerned if, I, I, I'm not opposed to saying yes to that, but I'm very opposed to any liability the town might, might have by granting such a variance, even if someone jumps off and it's a shell and he gets paralyzed or, I mean, it's, it's, I'm not talking about friends and family, I'm talking about people wandering the neighborhood who think it might be cool to jump off the garage roof, right? So I just want to ensure that, you know, that that's not setting the town up for any liability, right? By giving this applicant the ability to have a structure so close to the pool. It just has me more than a little concerned. And I don't know, Mr. Kennedy, how that, we can handle in terms of.
I mean, what we're.
Ensuring that applicant is taking responsibility for any liability that's related to that proximity and is not become something that the town has any liability with. That the applicant should absolve the town of any liability associated with that choice.
Do we put that on record?
Yeah, I understand, but I don't know if that can hold away.
Yeah, I mean, I think what, what you're saying is, and it's a fair point, is that if, if the application is approved, that your concern will be noted and that perhaps as a condition, you're saying that the applicant's and successors hold the borough and the zoning board and their agents representative, et cetera, harm was from and against any and all possible liabilities associated with that variance granted. I think that's what you're saying. Tim, how do you feel about that?
I'll agree.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll close the board questions section, open up for public questions or public comments regarding this application. Now would be the time to come forward. Put your hands, stand up, say hey. Oh, we do have one.
Yep, we do.
I think you know this guy.
All right, so.
G R E I G, A O two C Street.
Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension provider will be the truth, besting odds to help you guys?
I do.
And if I get to say one disclosure about my friend Phil. So, Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely right. Anytime the law does not penalize you all from volunteering your services to the betterment of our great borough and you don't lose or forfeit your rights, however, the only thing that I would say is, if Mr., and I don't know if Mr. Gray is gonna speak in favor or speak against it or whatever, and I think the only thing that we need to do, and we've said this before, is we can't take Phil's comments any more serious or less serious than any other member of the public.
Thank you.
They don't take me serious anymore. There's a couple thoughts, there's very little communication between neighbors. And I do have an issue with some part, some of the landscaping of his yard. There's a, what I call a weed that has grown up behind his pool. And if he's doing landscaping, I would ask if he could maybe remove that. It leaves over top of my garage and I can't keep the gutters clean. And also, he's got some communication wires that are roughly a foot off the roof of my garage, which are, makes it difficult to, if I'm cleaning the gutters or going up and opening my garage roof, you could get caught on.
No problem.
You could.
We'll bring it back there.
Okay. That, and the other thing I was, I was listening to is, is conversations going on.
Wait, hold on, let's just get clarity on that, because if that gets baked into the resolution, I want to make sure that we're clear about what, what the expectation is. I believe you've heard testimony that utilities are gonna be run on the ground. So the communication wire that you're requiring to, wouldn't that be remedied by the utilities being run on the ground?
These wires come off between the poles, there's, there's a poles and wires that go down the property line on the south side of our properties. And then they come off the pole, off the wires between the two poles and they skirt across the roof of my garage.
Right, well, they go underground, wouldn't that then not be the case anymore?
They, they agreed to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
I mean, to the extent, and then, obviously, the, the, to the extent of, I don't even know if these are our wires, but to the extent that they are, I mean, we'd be more happy to cooperate with you and contact Horizon or Firehouse or whoever it is, and they should be on your roof, for sure.
Right, and they go through, they go through the trees in the back of my properties, you can't drill them.
Do they go to our house?
Yes.
I think, Mr. Milton, sometimes that there are certain sections in this municipality where cable and electric are fed between the property lines. And I've been in meetings by that personally myself. I don't know if there's electric in front of this house, is there? Just curious, I don't know, it comes from the rear. Comes from the rear. So that means, you know, just noting that it's most likely that the electric and cable and phone and wireless are gonna come from the rear.
The only other thing I was listening to is this issue with the garage in the back. The west side bay of the garage is not accessible really with a car. There's only ten feet between the garage and that staircase. I mean, I'm driving cars and body shops and stuff where you have to do a real tight spot. I don't see anybody to be able to navigate that. So we're approving, or we, not we anymore, you guys, would be approving a garage that can't be used for the storage of automobiles, which is the exclusive purpose of a garage. So he really needs to have a one bay garage there, not a sit.
The other, I guess, the, would be the other side, you ought to get to use for bicycles.
I understand that, but the part of the, the rules of the town, a garage is used for the storage of automobiles exclusively. And you'll be approving a garage which is not knowingly, that it's not gonna be used for the, it's okay with it, I understand, but you realize that you're approving a garage that's not being used for the storage of automobiles.
I mean, to the extent that would, does not decide that's approaching on the pool, is it?
The whole thing is.
The back is, the back of it is, not, not, not the, not the second, not the second bay.
The part that's approaching on the pool is the south side, the second bay is the west, the south side.
All right.
But it is storing a car, because we heard testimony that he is gonna use, could use the, you can pull a car in that one. So it's a matter of, it's a matter, I guess, of.
I'm gonna just pull bicycles.
No, no, there's two bays though, right? So I'm not, I'm not, like, I'm just trying to hear this out, I'm trying to think this, like, how this works. You could have a garage that's really big. I mean, people in town have a one and a half bay, you only get one car in there, the other half bay.
You're only getting one car.
Yeah.
If you don't count the other side of that as a parking spot, then as long as it's not triggered parking variance, I don't think it matters. I, I think if you were counting that as a legitimate parking spot, that would be a different story. They, they can't actually get a car into it.
So the question, I mean, are we in excess of building coverage?
Because then, right, that's wrong, that's wrong. Also, if that's only, if that's only counted as one parking spot and it's gonna be for parking variance, whether it's a solid wall or a half or a garage door, doesn't matter. Yes, I just want to make sure, you scared me a little bit. We, it's still a garage, I think it's still a car in it, I think.
One car, doesn't have to be, just because you have two bays, you have to be able to pull two and you still count a car.
No, you use a garage to store your vehicles.
Just for clarity, I'm not arguing against the garage.
No, I get it.
But I'm just saying, I think you might be approving something that we're not watching.
No, it's, it's good you, you may, it's good to throw that out, because I don't think anyone caught the fact that you couldn't drive a car there, but I think it's immaterial because it's not gonna trigger parking variance anyway.
Plus, if you were driving a car there, that becomes a wider driveway and changes the purpose. So there's, you get.
They're not counting out the parking spot, so it's kind of, you turn it.
Additionally, I'd like to say that the plan that Mr. Peterson drew up is much better looking than the house they currently possess there.
Sure, not kidding.
And I think that's a credit to his skills.
It is, it's a beautiful house, it's beautiful. Okay, so with that, any more comments from the public? So now we're gonna close the public session and, I mean, you could, I think we could move towards above. I'm now thinking you could go to board comments, I think, for, has it included the comments section?
Kevin.
Yeah, I think there's questions and comments, as, as was what we just did, we did questions and comments. So with that, Mr. Kennedy, if you could please, some words.
If the application is going to be approved, some of the conditions that we noted are our standard. Compliance with all the promises, commitments, and representations that the applicant's team made tonight. Compliance with any applicable housing rules, regulations, contributions that the ordinances require. Tim, we usually have a twenty-four month timeframe that, for which building permits need to be secured after the adoption of the resolution. Graded, grading and range details need to be reviewed, approved by the borough engineer. Compliance with all applicable FEMA regulations. Now, I add here, compliance to thirty-seven feet, not thirty-eight feet, but I guess that becomes moot because we're making height compliant, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And obtaining any necessary demolition permits and, let's see. Compliance with the hab story requirement, the ground floor not to be used as living space or habitable space in accordance with all those prevailing regulations. Obviously, code compliant keel fence. We usually have a requirement that you perpetually maintain landscaping. Let's see. Let's see, there's no backs in the garage, garage, mine, it's just living space. Controlling all runoff on site and stormwater management details be reviewed, approved by the borough engineer. And the possibility of installing underground drainage system for stormwater management purposes if recommended by the borough engineer. Let's see, comply with, Tim, I think, or Tom, is there like a, do you sometimes have a new construction pilot, some type of DEP restriction saying, promise we're not gonna use the level for living purposes?
Hell, I think we do.
If we do, do, that would apply. And let's see. Now, we're gonna have, I wrote here, possibility of taking one foot off the top floor, but we'll come back to that. Obtaining all unnecessary, or all and any and all necessary outside approvals. And we usually have a caveat that if the nature of the application or the nature of the relief materially changes as a result of those outside approvals, you need to come back here. Let's see, we had Tony, it's a question about the walkway and strips in the burst areas, is that still worth the question?
Look, I mean, the, the bottom line is, I think we can all recognize that forty-nine point eight-two percent is a high likelihood that with the introduction of some stepping stones or increasing the concrete walkways, it's gonna trigger variance, it's gonna trigger impervious cover requirements.
Okay, so let's.
And I, I can't see having access to your basement, Tom, without having some type of footprint or something there to the door. You know what I mean?
Well.
You know, and I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to approving, you know, a fifty-one or fifty-two percent coverage issue.
Well, I think then that becomes an issue because, I mean, you get the garage, like, and, like, so I think that makes about comment there. But, you know, we're not, and the reason that we're good, I'm good for the garage is that we're not having any kind of building coverage issue. A larger garage than what's needed to score a apartment.
Right, what I'm saying is, I'd rather see something on a plan.
No, I'd rather them, why would forty-nine percent, you're not gonna go over that.
Forty-nine point eight-two.
Fine, can't go over fifty.
I, you know, I, can I, can I talk? Chairman, absolutely.
The only thing I'll comment is, we have two more applications, this application, and then, this application is done to get APM. So if we don't come to a walkway APM, we're gonna put you after the fourth applicant, there's no doubt about that. So make what comment you want.
No, we will comply with the building coverage requirement and we'll comply with impervious. And we're gonna save some space here at the front step, so if we had a couple of stepping stones here, you know, that might be a little three foot by three foot pad, we, we will comply.
Okay.
Okay, and then, just continuing, we had a shed to be eliminated. And I think we wanted, Tim, confirming the paper, the previous paper details.
Correct.
We had the, I dropped the whole house, we'll come back to that one in a moment. Flood vents being put on the plans. And then, so what is it, we're going to lower one, lower the crawl space by one foot and lower the top half story by one foot.
Correct.
So as to comply. And then we're going to, now, Tony, you also suggested something about if it was at three feet above BFE and first floor, but that, that's sort of, I guess, that's moot.
So only go to thirty-five, how do they, how do they get there, it's immaterial.
Got it. And then we have the whole harmless provision that we talked about, which Mr. Milton agreed, and we'll just have that as a separate standalone document or sign on the bottom part of the resolution. The applicant works in good faith to remove the weeds over the garage of a neighbor, Phil. Greg also, we're gonna, in good faith, have the applicant either arrange for or contact the companies to have those communication wires basically removed from Phil's garage or encroachment. And again, that whole issue may be resolved, Mr. Chairman, with the placement of utilities on the ground. But to the extent it's not, and to the extent they are, the applicant's responsible for the care of that. And that was it. Right, Tim, you heard those, those conditions.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. Okay, so with that, is there anyone want to make a motion to approve this application? I'll make the motion.
Yes, I appreciate that applicants desire to approve this there, so I agree.
Thank you for a nice presentation. Is that it?
Yes. 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 Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, Mr. President.
Congratulations and good luck with the project.
Thank you for the project. Thank you for the concession.
Good thinking.
We, we go to the smaller.
Yeah, we're on the front, Mr. Story.
Yeah, yeah, sure enough, yes, correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Congratulations.
I thought I'd be done in fifteen minutes.
I just want to suggest that you should surprise us.
To reduce it to four feet, that's why it was made. Thanks. We have a.
It's already, it's not, we're not changing. It's already concrete.
Six of those.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have a walkway on the side. So you draw the side of the building. Because otherwise, there's no way to get to the balance. That's, that's the reason, it's like a ninety, or it's where we need additional. Okay, they forgot. That's, yeah, well, it's actually. We'll see. So that doesn't have. Oh, yeah, so that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't have, we're adding. Something else with the.
Okay. This is the application of Brian and Lyndon Gavney, four oh five fifteenth Avenue, the third time tonight. Ted, you are. Ted, you are the Borough Zoning Officer, Construction Official. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth, the best you know, to help you live? Okay, and is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice papers? Okay, uh the Board Secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it would be my humble opinion, we have jurisdiction to proceed. We will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. A one is a development application package dated December eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And let's see. A two is the application checklist. A three is the minor land use uh zoning permit denial form with attachment, and that's dated December eighth, two thousand twenty-three, slant December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. And A four is the architectural uh plans prepared by Amolchenko Architect, and that's dated December eighth, two thousand twenty-three, consisting of three sheets. All right, so good evening. If you could uh state your name and swear you won.
I'm Brian Gaffney.
Okay.
Paul Amolchenko.
Okay, gentlemen, if you could raise your right arms, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you live?
Yeah.
Okay, and so let the record reflect, both the gentlemen have been sworn, and uh Mr. Amolchenko, you are testifying in capacity as a licensed architect with all licenses and certifications current and up to date, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and then uh Mr. Gaffney, just to get the ball rolling here, with regard to the four oh five fifteenth Avenue property, you're the owner of that property?
Yes, I am. My wife and I is.
Okay, and how long have you owned it properly?
Well, in July, uh twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and um my note suggested that there's a um uh single, I'm sorry, there's a duplex there now, correct?
Yes, two then.
Okay, and um so let me just get some record, uh with regard to the existing duplexes, an up and down unit or side by side?
Up and down.
Up and down. And is it unit A and B or one and two, or you don't?
I don't know.
Okay, you got it. Up and down, you got it. So with regard to the uh upstairs unit, how many bedrooms?
Two, two.
And how many bathrooms?
One.
And is that upstairs unit occupied?
No.
Okay, and now with regard to the downstairs unit, how many bedrooms?
Two.
And how many bathrooms?
One.
And is that occupied?
No.
Okay, so um welcome, and why don't you tell the board what it is you're looking to do?
Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, um my wife and I would like to uh, what we're gonna, a plan I'm making is our permanent residence, uh and moving in and retiring here, so this will be our permanent residence. Um we'd like to turn the existing house into a one-family and add an additional uh third floor to it. We'd like to add a detached two-car garage, uh with a small apartment above it. My wife's uh parents are getting older now, um in their early, and we may have to have one in a family. We do have two grown-up children. My daughter is married and living in Virginia, who's had her first grandchild. We have a son who's living in Florida, um and I don't know if the family keeps, they have more and more kids, I'm just looking to, I think, for the one-family house that we can enjoy with our family.
Thank you. All right, that being said, the Gaffneys engaged us to create a single-family home for the existing uh two uh two-family duplex uh that exists there now. And but their desire is obviously to retain the second, uh the second residence. And what our proposal is this evening is to create a two-car garage um with a uh a second level apartment, a one-bedroom uh apartment, living unit, with a small kitchen, a bath, um and a living, living dining area. Uh the access by a staircase um on the um on the west side of the property. We are seeking variances for the two-family residence. Uh building coverage, uh we're proposing thirty-five percent versus the thirty percent required. Although I have to add a caveat, and that is that if you notice from our site plan, we have uh part of the uh neighbor's cottage occupying some of our property in the amount of about fifty square feet. And also um the Gaffneys have told me uh recently that our recent proposal uh shows a shed on the rear of the property, that shed is being removed. It's gone already, okay, fast.
And I'm sorry, what, and the variances you need were building coverage?
Uh building coverage, yes, we're proposing, uh we're proposing thirty-five percent where thirty percent is required. Given the fact that there's about fifty per uh fifty square feet of the neighbor's um cottage on our property and removal of that shed at twenty-four square feet, it reduces that um that amount by uh a percent and a half, which would basically result uh result in thirty-three and a half percent of building coverage. The side yard also is uh five feet is required, and uh we have a pre-existing condition of three feet to the westerly side. Then uh the accessory building, which I addressed, now is being removed entirely, uh well, the accessory building is being uh removed. However, the building height for our proposal, I originally had uh had proposed twenty-three feet. We reduced that now to twenty-two feet. If I change the configuration of the roof from a gable roof to a, to a hip roof uh with a flattened section on top. So our proposal would be to request twenty-two foot variance uh beyond the eighteen foot that the township requires.
I'm sorry, is that garage height we're discussing here?
The garage height uh by township board.
Twenty-two.
Quite many.
You're, you were asking for a four-foot height variance for the garage.
Correct.
In addition to the existence of the garage apartment, both.
Yes.
Any other variances associated with garage besides those?
No, no.
And Mr. Chairman, I just had, Ed, just when they were saying that the um the neighbor's cottage is on their property, did they, I think they're suggesting that they don't want to count that as covered, but not there.
No, I, Kevin, I wasn't suggesting that we don't count it. I was just saying as a caveat that part of our building coverage is due to a neighbor.
Okay, got it. I was gonna say, I think it will count. Okay, got you, thank you.
It does. Our proposal consists of a two-and-a-half story uh structure with a large family area, a dining area. We've added a vestibule to the rear of the property for access and a kitchen, a half bath, and a utility area on the first level. We're proposing three bedrooms on the second level with two baths, a closet. And on the third level, we're proposing a small loft area, and then a third sleeping quarters, which basically would be designed as uh fire-resistant, five-acre destruction uh in accord with the codes. There's also a bath on on that level, a shower bath on that level. The garage apartment, very simply, is a small living area, dining area, kitchenette, a utility area, washer and dryer, and a singular bedroom with a closet. And the garage is proposed as just a two-car garage for storage, and we have access by a staircase on the uh on the easterly side. I'm not known for being brief, but I'll, I'll end it there. I'll open with questions if you have it.
Okay, so we'll start with questions. We'll start down on this side with Mr. O'Neil.
Okay. It's a perfect plan. Where's the, there's no bathroom. Have to drop. Washer and dryer, I don't see a problem with that.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is, this is an old plan. They're skipping that part of it. I apologize, I don't know how this was said, but there, there is a full bath proposed on that level.
Uh where would it go? In the laundry room?
It it would, it was relocated to take, uh that's to the laundry area.
So Kenny got that, that, and I heard that's not reflected.
What materials are you using for the driveway?
Uh we are, if if anyone has seen, the property is a large, uh by two of this area of existing driveway. That entire driveway is going to be removed and replaced with impervious paper.
I don't see the cap, calculation for the impervious coverage anywhere.
We are um, we are conforming within uh within the fifty-five percent.
Z two with a chart?
Oh, I did, yeah, got, uh it's all for me.
Dick, this ready?
Okay.
I have no issue with the plan other than the use of an apartment garage in the back. And I know you have a duplex now, but we're, we're adding to kind of an overtaxed uh area by having the garage with living space in the garage. You have four bedrooms and a very large loft area. It looks like it's about four hundred fifty, five hundred square feet. So I, I have no problem with the main house. I have a problem with the use of the garage within the ornament.
So we, we'll continue this trend, because we've kind of been combining our questions and comments together, so we'll just continue to do that. So with that, Mr. Lubin.
Uh I agree a hundred percent. I, I think the house uh compared to what's there now, that looks gorgeous. To put a two-car garage back there, uh it's tired on that lot, but I have no problem with that. I appreciate very much giving up the two-family house and making it one. But you're asking to retain, but that's not what's happening. You're removing one and adding another. I, I don't believe, in my opinion, you can retain that two-family use by building it into a separate building. As I understand current code in our panel, rear apartments, full bathrooms are just not allowed unless they've been there for how many years? And that's, I'm saying.
New construction is not.
No new construction of a rear house, uh rear apartment. That's my.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I I typically go last, but I'll just, I'm just gonna tie on because for continuity's sake it makes sense. You're, you're looking to expand and continue a pre-existing non-conformant, non-conformant use. If you were to try to do that by renovating the front house into a two-family, that's an easier ask. You know, I'm not saying it would necessarily be approved, but it's an easier ask, but starting with the new structure and say, I could take the two-family, move there. The two-family is not conforming as it is, it's not a two-family zone. So it, you know, it's gonna be a stretch to try to get approval to get a garage apartment, a brand-new garage apartment built in this town. I mean, that's just the truth of of the matter. So given that, would you be, would you consider to accommodate the needs of your family in that you described? Looking at enlarging the primary house, maybe getting a coverage variance and eliminate the garage apartment? Because that would be something the board, I think, would be much more favorable towards as opposed to what you're seeking at at the moment. So, because it seems like, you know, your, your lock coverage doesn't seem to be an issue. So if you need a bigger front house to accommodate your aging parents or something like that, maybe you could work with the front house plans and abandon the plans to build a garage apartment.
Um Mike, I guess my question is important to me. Um it's, the existing house is the existing house, right? So I could just put it back together the way it is, correct?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. And then could I still, if I didn't have an apartment on the garage, can I add a garage on the park? I mean, could I, I mean, can I add a garage on the garage?
Yes.
Uh well, maybe not. I mean, if, if that garage triggers a variance, the answer would be yes. I don't, I wouldn't say that the garage that you'd seek to build would necessarily trigger a variance, but if it does, you could be back. If not, it's simply would be a permanent construction requirement.
So we still have to come back, we still have to come back, it's an expansion of a non-conforming use, adding a garage or.
Because, because of, because of the two-family designation, okay, so yes, I'm sorry, we just got your answer before you, I was wrong. Yes, you would have to come back because even building a garage, because you have an existing non-conforming, would result in you coming back. But asking for a garage is a whole hell lot different than asking for a garage apartment to be constructed.
Is it the board's suggestion or the patient that?
Would you let the board members continue with their questions and comments, and then you could maybe judge that for yourself by what everyone has said with what's on their minds if they choose to let you know? Sometimes people don't necessarily express their opinions, so.
You're, you're allowed a four hundred and forty square feet for a two-car garage, which doesn't count for what you're building covered. Is the calculations for the rear auxiliary structure included in the, in your calculations? Did you apply the four hundred and forty towards building coverage?
No.
You did not?
No.
Okay, so um because there's an auxiliary, there's potential for a, not potential for, because you're asking for an apartment above a garage, those calculations should be included towards.
Lock coverage.
Lock coverage, building coverage, and all those covers.
I understand.
So with that being said, you don't get the free pass on the four forty is what, what is. Correct, I'd have to, uh if I was to vote on it, I would have to have those calculations uh to be able to do that. Is there a requirement for uh separate from, does an auxiliary structure have to be a certain distance from the main structure? In other words, do we need to know the distance potentially from the corner of the hypothetical rear garage to the main structure?
I think.
And it's, that's what I think it is. You're, you're ten, more than ten feet away, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Five seventy-six. And the, I heard it, five seventy-six for the total square foot, but he's not.
He's not taking credit for it anymore, he's short.
We, that has to be included.
Has to.
You don't get the free, you don't get the four-four.
Well, five seventy-six has to go against.
Correct. Um and then uh I just overheard, um impervious or impervious papers would be the drive. Right, and then do you have a designated parking area for uh rear porch? Is there a designated parking area where the tenant can go in and out and have degress in and out of the property without the convenience in the single-family residence?
We have, we have provided in our driveway, the length of the driveway and the, and the garage itself for parking space.
Which is, that's.
Three for the house.
Okay, can the tenant get out of the driveway?
Yes, it's.
Twelve and a half if there's a car parked there.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
What's that?
Thank you. Um the, the uh main structure, is it, the whole house is getting knocked down? Is the foundation getting knocked down as well?
No.
Foundation is remaining?
Yeah, it's ready, ready to, but actually.
I'm sorry?
It's good.
It's good.
We're keeping the whole, we're taking the um two-family that's already there. The, we, when we first bought it, we thought it was covered in mold, which we, we opened it all up, it wasn't. So we got lucky with that. Um so we wanted to see what we'd be dealing with. And you know, um so anyway, we have this two-family, we're not, you know, talked to a bunch of builders about knocking it down or um keeping it. And with the cost of material and everything right now, just so much, there's nothing wrong with the foundation, there's nothing wrong, um all those, you know, there's nothing wrong with the structure. So why waste all that material?
I, I agree with you. I just was about, my question was really about the three-foot setback, so if you were, if you were knocking it down, I would be asking you to move it over.
Yeah, we just wanted to gut it, and then, like I said, um redo it if you don't understand. Yeah, we just wanted to gut it, and then, like I said, um, we do it if it's a one-family and have the apartment on the other side, but now if I came through the apartment, I just may wanna just say, we, we put the thing back together and sell it, move on.
I'm struggling with it, with the, with the apartment over the garage, it would not be something that I'd be favorable to.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I'm same line of thinking, so I guess my question is, I like the front structure, um, and since this is common as well, would you be willing to reduce the height of the garage to eighteen foot, remove the apartment above it, and go that route? 'Cause I, I mean, I think the front house I like, and the garage, I don't think there's an issue having a garage there, I don't like the apartment, and I don't like the extra six feet, so if you move it down to eighteen feet, so it complies with the garage, and single-family on the front here.
That could be done, but obviously we have to evaluate what our proposal is.
Okay, I mean, that's my thought process right now.
So, um, we still need the same two-car garage without the apartment, you said?
That's what I was saying, and lower, okay, lower, not to, you'd lower it to eighteen foot instead of twenty-two, and...
There's a question about the computation associated with the garage, because it's five seventy-six, some of which wasn't counting its lot coverage, so we'd have to, in fact...
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, if they come back and they wanna do that, I'm more inclined to vote for it if that, I don't think that, you know, you're talking about the lot coverage there, it's only going to remove the lot coverage, I might have heard it, and by including that. Right now, he said he, he used the worst-case scenario and didn't include that benefit.
How he did not?
No, he did, he said he included that, right? You said, you counted it?
No, no, I did not.
You took the benefit, you took the, you took the benefit of, oh, he did, okay, so we do, yeah.
Lower the lot coverage?
Yeah, lower.
Yeah.
Did it improve?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. So that's my flavor, I was like...
Yeah, that'd be an idea, it depends. All right.
It makes a better...
Little, little circle.
My question would be, if you do it the way they're steaming to lean, are you gonna put it back together such a panel?
Well, that's what I, I need to figure out, 'cause I had an idea of what I wanted to do, it's gonna give a lot of money to do what I wanna do, and I just wanted to figure that all out now, and I may say, you know what, I mean, nothing, I mean, I, I guess I could just put the house back together, I don't need any approval to do any of that, right, I mean, I don't have to put a garage, I'm not doing anything, just put the house back together and sell it.
Well, I don't want you to walk away with that comment, we have first asking Mr. Bianchi, since it's already gutted and the, it's a two-family, right, previously, that would simply be getting permits issued as opposed to...
Well, there's no expansion.
Okay, and expansion would be, um, going wider on, on...
He can't go up, he can't go out, he can't, he can't...
So as long as he stays within the four, right, so as long as he stays within the four walls, he could reconfigure the internal of the two apartments in, in pretty, I mean, I don't wanna say that any way he wants, but to some degree, there's no, there would be no issue with applying for that or having to get any variance associated with renovating the existing two-family?
No, he could do that.
Can I just confirm, it has not been demolished, you said?
No, no.
Now, the inside has been...
The inside, yeah, here's the mold, both of them.
Right, right, so it sounds like renovation within the guidelines of the construction code resulted in you just having to request permits, if in fact you submitted drawings and, and the construction department would be reviewing, and all of a sudden, ooh, that looks like an expansion of a non-conformant.
Yeah.
Okay, you hear it at the moment, right, and you could change your plans, then, if in fact you didn't wanna come back for a variance, but they would let you know based on what you submit for, for building permits, whether or not it triggers a variance, and we just heard, it wasn't likely, if you're not expanding, adding additions or raising or going, or doing anything on the outside, it sounds like, you know, you probably could do that, just understand a permitting.
And then just for record, keeping perfect, that would probably just to the home, but if there's a garage element, even if it's not an apartment, because it's a two-family home, you know, saying that only permits one family, that would be variance.
And what about the size of the garage, is it four forty or can they keep the five seventy-six?
Well, the only difference, four forty, we're giving an exception for building coverage, not lot coverage. If you exceed that, now you have to apply all. So, but it's still an expansion of a non-conforming use, so it needs a variance. What, is it four forty or a five, a five fifty, whatever it is?
Right, understood.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Are we done going through, I'm sorry, no, we're not, all right, go ahead, would you mind if we just finish, so you could...
Oh, absolutely.
We have one more, one more, forget your question?
Absolutely.
Um, I forgot, no. If he puts it back together as a single-family, he can put the garage there without any variances or anything.
Correct.
If you put it back together as a duplex, then you have, you can't put the garage or the driveway or that, change any of that stuff, you can only do the main structure. So, in abundance of... That's good, that's good that you point that out, you understand that, right? If you made it a one-family, you could still do, do garage, no variances. Conforming garage, not a great big garage.
What's the size of the four-car garage?
It's four, four hundred and forty square feet.
It can be larger, as long as you meet the lot building coverage, you can have up to a three-car garage. But it's gotta meet the building coverage in a lot of time.
I just had that.
Yeah, yeah.
I just had that.
Yes, Claire?
The only thing I would say is that before you, like, just throw it out in the way and just go and sell it, like you mentioned, go on to retake, um, these are fantastic suggestions. Still to have a garage, I don't, um, but I have a beautiful house, so if you can have a beautiful house, if you expand it, start from scratch, expand it, and still be able to put a garage or just turn it into a one-family, what you have, and still have a garage, you can have a nice piece of property.
Okay. My question basically, and since we've all been familiar with the house, we are desperate to change the exterior of the house, um, that, um, the cosmetics are sorely lacking. What my question is, what the board's disposition might be, if we were to come back and propose incorporating that one-bedroom second apartment into the main structure, as it is now? Right now, it's a two-bedroom, if we propose a one-bedroom, and reduce that in terms of concept, and just the, uh, the two-car garage in the rear of the property, I know, I know the variance.
I, I would defer on that only because I think we just said earlier, you could renovate, well, at, whether it's, it's one and a half is considered one of, one apartment, and half is considered one apartment, it's still a two-family, so I think the answer to your question is, it doesn't necessarily mean the first floor is one family, the second floor is one family, so if you wanna chop your two-family into a different allocation, I think, you know, subject to reviewing the plans and approval, it doesn't sound like you'd be stopped from doing that, that, that there's nothing to stop you from doing it.
But again, the devil's always in the details.
It's renovation, right, and that's what I said, you know, if it triggers expansion, then...
My comment on that, because the house that you've done is far improvement for the street, um, you want a apartment, a motorball type of apartment.
Exactly.
Um, instead of keep, get it, get rid of, get rid of the two-family, make that another bedroom suite, then it's not a two-family home. You can give her, you know, you're not renting it, you can give her a door, a bedroom, and even a ba, and a bathroom, as part of the expansion of the home, and then it's no longer a, um, a non-conforming.
The board would have to approve doing that.
Okay, but I think that's the way, you know, once, once you put a solid wall up and make it a two-family home, that's what the opposition is. So if there's a, a door, you know, it's an older parent, is what you're saying to us, wouldn't it be better to have access? One yes, one no?
Yeah, I'm just...
It's part of the two-family, so...
Yeah, okay.
Sir, with variances, you can expand a non-conforming use, you require variances, you can do that.
Just for me to be able to understand my head here, so, um, and obviously we won't figure it out, but I'm just gonna put the house back together and sell it, I don't need to do anything, I just gotta go to the building department and get my apartments. But I wanna make this house, put that house up the way I've got it proposed here, is what a two-car garage, I have to get a variance for the garage.
It's expansion, if you're gonna keep the two-family in the front, anything you do is gonna be, anything you do outside of the four walls is gonna be considered expansion of a non-conforming use, so the garage would have to come back for a back. If you're expanding your non-conforming, you're, you're hitting a garage. If it's a single-family, you're not expanding, you're not, because you're not, you're conforming now, if you go to single-family, you're considered conforming.
All right, so we can, so if I do the house that I'm proposing, the house, single-family...
We could go to vote today.
All right, we, a single-family, and I have a two-car garage, then I have to get a variance for the garage, correct? If it has no apartment...
No, not if it's under eighteen feet and, and four hundred and, and it's not...
Well, not. I think he does.
He's still... A non-conforming Brian, but not locked up like you built it.
Saying like, to approve it based on his plan.
Right, here, he needs a variance, we have to give him a variance for it.
I'm referring to that here. What's that, we're agreeing, so I don't know what, because, you know, we're a president and...
Okay, well, I'm just trying to understand this, because, yeah, so if I have the two-car garage and the single-family house without the apartment, and I wanted to keep it at the proposed garage size without the apartment, I can't do that.
Not twenty-two feet? Eighteen foot and a half, yes.
Okay, eighteen feet, I'm, I'm seeing, but if I wanna go twenty-five, twenty-five and set twenty by twenty, for the moved side garage.
These are, these are architectural questions, I think to simplify, sir, to expedite...
Well, that's what's on the plan now.
If you have a single-family residence, then if you're proposing a garage, you would still need a variance for setbacks.
Right.
Okay, and you would be in compliance if it was only eighteen feet high. If you wanted to do a two-family structure, which you have, with pre-existing non-conforming use, with your application you are today, you're gonna need variances. The reason that, in my opinion, we cannot vote on it is because the square footage, building coverage, lot coverage for the garage should be applied, because you don't get credit in those areas for the actual garage apartment. I don't know if that was complicated. You are allowed to expand upon a non-conforming use with variances. So to this gentleman's point, if you wanted to decrease and put a small rental unit, if you took it from a four-bedroom and kept it a four-bedroom, and made the rental of one, and did it increase your footprint, I personally would not have a problem with that, you understand? On the not, on the existing structure, it still would need variances.
Right. Did you repeat that, sir, I didn't get all that.
If you take the existing non-conformity that you have right now, and you said, you take it and you have, you have two bedrooms up, two bedrooms down?
Right.
If you said three bedrooms up, one bedroom down, and the one bedroom is your rental, I personally don't have an issue with that, because you're creating a more predominant single-family occupancy, you still require variances, I can't speak towards the flavor of the rest of the board, but with variances, you can, uh, potentially increase, uh, you know, a, a non-conforming use, you do see it, but the, as the chair would always say, is the positive criteria significantly has to pass that way to negative criteria. The last thing I'm gonna say is, if you, I'm not opposed, maybe Mr. Ross might be in a variance, is that if you said right now, uh, you wanna switch to getting a two-car garage approved right now, and making, whether it's a single-family or secondary, uh, or multifamily, we can skip right into that with the chair's approval, do you follow? If you said I want, I wanna forego the rear apartment, what's that?
I think multifamily is a different application, you know, if you're spending on conformant use, uh, garage.
We're here now, right, because the only thing he's asking for is a garage.
You have, I'm not sure where that comes from, but you can, I think, all day, you can try and stay, see if they have a cover that can be... I think we're gonna see, if, if we totally have, we're gonna try to pay, we're gonna be, so...
Um, I just, I just said, just... I think this is correct, but I'm not positive.
But they mean that?
Yeah.
The house is impervious, I suppose, so they're, they're usually just one...
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Maybe if it's seventy-five, twenty-five, I think, that would, that would... Right, so an expansion on that, I just want to have a, not exactly this.
Yeah.
Because...
Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to take a break, or should you be turning off this re-...
I think, just, I'm...
I was gonna say, probably, I mean, we should probably either, if we're gonna stop any, or, or just say, let's...
All right, all right. We're gonna have to... We're gonna have to get to use this. Okay. Okay, so we just, I, I appreciate the sideboards, but if we're going to do that, if you've got any time, we're going to take a break and give you the time, or we gotta get back in session.
Well, I would just like to ask, if I could, if we could figure this out here, if we could keep the single-family house exactly like we're proposing, and go for the two-car garage with no apartment, with the eighteen-foot ceiling, at the size of the garage we're talking, eighteen foot, eighteen foot...
So, are then, what are we triggering, what variances would we be triggering, then, if, if, if there's, if there's, if they're gonna keep it, if they're gonna keep a two-car garage, and we're just gonna renovate the existing front house, two, two-family house into a single-family house, are there any variances being triggered?
Building coverage. What's the building coverage on that?
Five seventy-six.
We have thirty-five, thirty-five percent down there.
Yeah, we're thir, we're thirty-five and thirty is required.
Okay, so the answer is, yes, you can do that, we just would need to recount, you would need to break, or we could bring you back after the next application, after you recount for that, but we'd have to know what the, um, if it's only the building coverage variance that we wind up getting triggered, and then we, and we also, no, because...
Mr. Chairman?
A slight setback, we have a, also, or...
Mr. Chairman, pardon me, but you already have those calculations, if we're eliminating the apartment, then we're taking credit for the four hundred and forty square feet on the two-bedroom, on the two-car garage, and all your calculations are correct before you.
But the four, it's not four forty, it's five seventy-six.
Yeah, right, I counted, I counted the hundred, uh, the difference between four to forty and five seventy-six.
Okay. One seventy-six is in the...
That's not the way it works, if you go over four forty, the entire garage counts as, it's in the orders, note number five, bottom, no.
And, Mr. Chairman, what I would just say, and I say this respectfully to the applicant, and, and, I mean, obviously, they spent a lot of time and money to come here, and, uh, I know we're saying a lot of things, and you're picking up on a lot of them, but a lot of them are abstract, and it's very, very, my experience is very, very, very hard to sort of design a house and, and combine elements just right here on the fly, and so what I would encourage, I mean, I know everyone wants to maybe proceed with this as we can, but sometimes, in the light of day, it's easier to, to design things than just doing it on the fly, but, uh, just, you know...
I agree, I, I, I think at this stage, if a, a change from what was proposed, we would just get more comfortable with, with coming back with, with those calculations. For us to say, the garage apartment's gone, imagine an eighteen-foot, not a twenty-two-foot build, it, like, you're, I, I think that there's significant enough change, you guys should rethink about it. It sounds to me like if they go down to single-family and wanted, wanted, if they've been in two-family use and wanted to build that.
Just the building lot coverage.
Right. And just be coming back for, but if they agree to do that tonight, and we have an accurate building lot coverage, could the decision be made tonight? I mean, is there any reason why we wouldn't? I mean, I guess we gotta ask the board if there's a discomfort with doing that. But if they make it single-family as is, and look for a new garage as is, just a little garage apartment.
But would you want to know if the, that a single-family home is gonna be upstairs down? I mean, what would be that?
It's what's proposed.
We're not gonna change the housing.
Question is the garage. I don't see any, I don't see any reason to bring it back. I mean, unless, I'll be working on it. I think that's thirty percent of the use, eliminating the garage apartment. Seeing an application like that, we certainly are looking at that same, or it's a paper that's. Proposal, if that was a clean, if that's what they came in with to begin with, then it just would take about ten minutes, right? I've been a lot of nodding, so I think.
Mr. Chairman, yes, if, if we do, the calculations were adding ten percent to building coverage, so we would be requesting at forty-five percent building coverage.
Okay, so we've done this in the past when we've made anonymous apply changes. We have between now and next meeting in May to approve your resolution. We will make our approval contingent on the resolution, then in actual testified numbers, not, appreciate you doing it right now, giving us a rough idea, but you, you've gotta put something in our copywriting exactly what the new calculations are going to be prior to us giving final approval. So we may approve the application based on what you're telling us right now, but the town has nothing from you submitted as to what the actual numbers are. We've been open up.
So I submit that to Ted in April.
Right, and then, and then if, if we don't have it, we won't approve the final resolution at the next meeting or whenever, whenever that comes up for. And I was just reminded, and I think we finished with the board comments and questions, public comments, questions, is anyone here to speak about this application? Raise your hand, stand up, say hey. Okay, I see, I see someone, I do see someone, okay.
Hello, if you could just state your name and address, please.
Ray Tunis, T U N I S, four zero three fifteen.
All right, good evening to you guys, welcome, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension providing will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guys?
I do.
Thank you.
My concern is what you all addressed here tonight regarding an apartment in the backyard. I'm sure Belmore's vision is not to further put more backyard apartments or backhouses. So that was my concern. The structure of the garage was my concern as well, that it appeared to be four or five feet above the restricted eighteen-foot restriction, that was my concern. So I love the idea of a single dwelling next to me, and it's a beautiful drawing, and it's just that I don't think Belmore needs to go in the direction of more backhouses in the apartments.
Appreciate your comments, I very much appreciate your comments tonight. Okay, we'll close to, anyone else from the public? Nope, we'll close to public question, comments.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one other thing as a standing offer, however you wanna use this, if you approve the application that you submit to those conditions, that would be one option. Or if you wanted to, you could say, come back and submit the plans and direct me to have a resolution prepared at the next meeting anyway. Because if you got approval tonight, your resolution's not adaptive until the next meeting. So if you wanted to do it that way, I'm just, I'm throwing that as, as a, if that's acceptable to the board. If it's not, we don't have to worry about it.
Are we saying, hold off on voting?
I mean, if you wanted to say, hold off and have them submit the revised plans and then approve it at the next time, and I would have the resolution completed. But if you all wanna proceed tonight, that, that's fine too, I'm just throwing that out there as an option.
Doesn't matter to you?
No.
We see, we see that consensus among board members to, to, let's go ahead and vote tonight. I, I think there's been enough movement here, and bringing this much, much closer to compliance, that this becomes a very simple application. The only complexity of it is, because of the modifications made, our potential approval of this tonight is gonna be very contingent on ensuring that the borough receives all of the adequate and, and correct calculations. So at, at the main meeting, if the resolution's ready, and if not, we're gonna fold or rescind that approval because we're going based on a lot of verbal commitments right now, and we have nothing to, other than Mr. Kennedy's notes, to memorialize the things that you guys are saying you're committing to right now. So, you know, we'd really like to see that become more solid, but I'm gonna continue to take the vote on it tonight based on the changes in the past.
We would provide, we'd provide a drawing for the garage showing the, and these calculations for building coverage.
Right, and should, given the loss of the garage apartment, you wanted to reconfigure any of the front design, I mean, it's something to consider as well, as long as it's not gonna be anything that's gonna be radical. You know, it's just, it may affect what any definition about the front house before, maybe it'll have to. Alright, so with that, Mr. Kennedy, I know there might be a lot to summarize.
I got it.
But we're, we're pretty good, shake right now.
So basically, we are saying that if the application will be approved, it will be subject to a number of conditions. The easy standard ones, compliance to all promises, with this representation to the team made tonight. And, you have a four-month timeframe for which building permits are secured, creating drainage details to be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer, if necessary, obtaining any necessary outside approvals. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have abandonment, a knowing and perpetual abandonment of that non-conforming use regarding the duplex in favor of a single-family home. And let's see, the garage height will be reduced to comply. And, let's see, the building coverage calculation, we're going to clarify. The large, but two of its driveway is gonna be removed and replaced with previous papers, that's still on the table, right? And let's see, we're going to, um. Alright, so here's where we get to the good stuff. We're going to basically revise the plan so as to confirm that the duplex will be abandoned in favor of a single-family home. We are going to eliminate the apartment in the proposed garage. You're gonna revise the plans to include a two-car garage that'll have a compliant height. And Ted, when the applicant abandons the duplex use, we need, you usually like some type of certified, notarized letter in the file, right?
Yeah.
Initially acknowledging that. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming what you're saying is, we are going to approve a building coverage variance not to exceed forty-five percent, depending on what the calculations come, and knowing that it's the lowest possible amount, it's not that they have, I mean, is that, I think we need to have a number in there. And also, I think.
Mr. Alventenko, I'll say what that number is, and then to validate it for us prior to us putting the resolution.
And now, I thought you said forty-five percent, but did I miss, hear that?
Yeah, but I, I can provide that information in the beginning of the week to April, but you have.
So it'll be the lowest amount possible.
But for our vote, give or take a couple of percent, I just, we're not gonna hear forty-five, and then it's gonna be fifty-five or sixty.
Or seventy, or.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's, you feel comfortable, give or take ten percent, it's.
Very.
Right, okay.
So those are the conditions.
Alright, very good. Anyone would like to make a motion to approve this modified application?
I'll make that motion.
And then, by the way, contingent on us hearing the final revised figures, okay? A second.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Samia?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Luvin?
Yes.
Mr. Dorian?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Here.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Mr. Samia?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Luvin?
Yes.
Mr. Dorian?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Yes, here.
Senator, here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is the application, Robert Sprague, one oh six Fourth Avenue. Just a couple quick, let me know how to proceed with this. Is there anyone here that had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? Don't see anybody. Let the record reflect, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice, we found everything to be in order. So it'd be my opinion that we have jurisdiction to, to proceed, gentlemen. And we also will swear in for the fourth and final time tonight, our friend Ed Bianchi, zoning officer in construction. Ed, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension providing will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guys? Okay? And what we'll mark into the record, what we as a board have before us. A one is the development application package that's dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. And A two is the minor land use zoning permit with attachment, and that's dated October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, slash October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. And, let's see, A three is the architectural floor plans and elevations prepared by N Two Architecture, and that's dated October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, last revised October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And I think that's consisting of two pages. And then this is John Jackson, the applicant's attorney, and Mr. Jackson, I know you handed out this document. I'm gonna mark this as A four, can you just, for the record, identify what A four is?
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, the A four is the printed version of the PowerPoint that I had. It mainly consists of the documents that are already on file, a couple of pictures, including Google Earth, so that when I go through the presentation, switch the slides around, the board will be able to follow what they're returning.
And then we're gonna mark this document as A five, as you just handed out.
Yes, that, that is a slight revision, showing a slightly different configuration. It's based on our conversations that we've had, my conversations I've had with you, as well as with Mr. Bianchi, the code enforcement zoning officer, to try to address some of the concerns that we know that the board has regarding these attached units.
So let's mark this as A five, and this is a revised architectural plan prepared by N Two Architecture. It's a floor plan, and it's dated October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. And I guess this A five supersedes what we marked as A three, correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so thank you, and thank you for waiting, and good evening.
Thank you, may I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
For the record, John Jackson, John Jackson Law Offices, and I represent Robert and Lisa Sprague. My offices are in Law, the Menace One Millian address. And Mr. Nemberg, his offices are in Adam, Sprague's have had their house here in Belmore for many years. So this has been a little bit of an evolving process. Mr. Nemberg was involved with the Spragues with redoing their house. They have a, they have five children who are growing. They're young adults now mainly, and are just about finished growing up. They'll be coming back with grandchildren, et cetera. And then Mrs. Sprague has a father who's getting up in years, and when he comes and stays with them, they would like to have basically a bedroom that, that would be available to give them some privacy, and also when the kids come home, et cetera. So as, as we evaluated this case, our initial thought was that we would just seek renovations that would allow the garage apartment, not exactly an apartment, to allow, this is the original configuration that we had, that would have a bed area, bathrooms, and then refrigerator, a little stove area, that would, and we didn't seek to use it as an apartment. When I discussed this case with Mr. Kennedy, he said, well, and I said to him, well, don't worry, we're not going to rent it. He said, wow, and April told me this as well. The board has, has been once bitten, twice shy with the Murray case, where there was a lawsuit over a condition restricting rental garage apartments. And they said the board is very familiar with that case, and it's probably not going to work. So we, our team huddled, and we came up with this concept, and I'll, I'll explain, you know, what the difference is. Mr. Sprague works from home, so this area that would be attached to the garage would be kind of a flex space, where their father-in-law could stay there to sleep, it became just like a detached bedroom from the main house. So speaking with Mr. Bianchi, if I'm saying your name correctly, he said to me, well, you know, you're showing a kitchen, or a refrigerator, or a sink, it's very hard to enforce that, that becomes an apartment. Because I said to him, we're not asking for an apartment. And he said, well, as far as I'm concerned, if there's cooking facilities, it's an apartment. So we evolved our plan, and our, our thought was that we would propose, as a condition, no sink, or, you know, no kitchenette sink, and we put a desk there, we still have room for a bed, et cetera. This way, this portion of the garage could not be rented, because you could never get a CO, because it would not have a kitchen. And we're not seeking a deed restriction, because, you know, the Murray case said that, that could be problematic, if family members could stay there. So we thought if we configured it in this way, and that was a condition of approval, that it could be prevented from being a rental. So that, that's just how I, I, you know, set the stage here, and I, I just wanna address one thing. Your ordinance does allow, as a conditionally permitted use, what is referred to as an accessory dwelling. Conditionally, a conditional use goes to the planning board when you meet all the conditions. When you don't meet all the conditions, which we don't, you go to the Board of Adjustment, and you are required to get one of the enumerated D variances. The standard approach is a little lower than on other D variances, because the use is permitted, albeit conditionally. I know this sounds like a, a lot of legal mumbo jumbo, but the important thing I will submit is that Belmore does not outright prohibit detached structures in, in a garage. Now, you certainly have the authority, and it's certainly a burden of proof that we have to show when we don't meet the conditions, that it still makes sense. And I'm not saying, oh, I'm entitled to have this, but what I'm saying is, this is not a prohibited use, and the, the, the issue we have here is that we don't meet the conditions. So what I would like to point out, before Mr. Nemberg comes up and speaks, is some, some of the things that I'd ask you to keep in mind as we go through this application. So in, in our presentation, the first thing is, there's a little bit of a uniqueness to this property in that there's a road that backs up to the detached garages. It's not like a detached garage that backs up to somebody else's backyard, where it's hidden from view, where code enforcement really has no ability to know what's going on there, where the activity and what happens in that structure is right on top of your neighbor's backyard, where they might be in their pool, or they might be in their backyard, and it, and it's an intensity of use. So we have this natural and somewhat unique situation. It's not unique on our block, but it's unique throughout the, most of the community. So it, it's right on the back. So what Mr. Bianchi said to me, you know, from code enforcement standpoint, we really don't know what's going on in the backyard, people can do whatever they want, and it's really a problem of enforcement for us. In this instance, we're on a road, it's right out in the open. We also have a unique situation in that we. We also have a unique situation in that we are across the street, directly across from a multifamily unit. So this is an area that has an intensity. It's, it's, it's not like, you know, a conventional neighborhood where it's like up back. It's, it's, you know, down close to the beach, I could go on Google Earth, I'm sure everyone knows where this is, but I happen to have on Google Earth, there it is as well. You know, we're, we're, we're close to a very busy place, the, you know, the center of activity in the borough. And we, we think that makes it unique. So we're, we're not going to be disturbing our neighbors. We have two of our neighbors here tonight who I believe have come out to support the application when we get to the, to that court point in proceedings. So with those things in mind, now, you know, it's, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for putting the one hour limitation that gives us the opportunity to come here. When I saw it at court, I was like, uh-oh. But we, we certainly heard a lot about what this board thinks about garage apartments and about living space in the garage, et cetera. But as I, I think it was you said, Mr. Sherrell, each case stands on its own merits, every case is unique. We're hoping that the board will view this as a use that is permitted. We're not seeking an apartment. Now, I've noticed for an apartment, based on what I heard from talking to your code enforcement, but we're, we're not seeking a use for apartment. It's, it's essentially a, a living space. We still have the two parking spaces in the garage, still a full, functional garage. It's just that this flex space is an adjunct to the house because they have the five kids, the kids are growing older, and we just think that this would be a good use of it. We also are right on the other side of the pool. We're at grade. We're, meet the height for a garage and everything else. We do need some other calls. So thank you for allowing me to lay that out there. So with that said, if I could have Mr. Nembergut come forward and be sworn.
All right. Good evening. If you could just state your first and last name.
Sure. It's Mark Nembergut, M-A-R-C-N-E-M-E-R-G-U-T.
I'm sorry, N-E-M?
E-R-G-U-T, Nembergut.
Okay. And business address?
516A Lincoln Avenue, Addon by C.
Okay. And you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
Licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, senior member or behalf member of NDR.
Okay. Good evening. If you could break through it. And do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide would be the truth and best you know to help you guys?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Nembergut, so Mr. Chairman, do you recognize Mr. Nembergut as an expert in the field of architecture?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nembergut, can you give the board an overview of the application, the evolution, how we got here, what you've previously done for the Sprague's, the house sits there? If you could just set the stage, if you will, as to how we got here.
Sure. So on the property now, as you know, it's an existing essentially three-story structure that was built around the late 90s. It's kind of a unique floor plan because the first floor is one large open space. And recently, we were hired to renovate it and make it a little bit more usable, break it up a bit more. But I want to point out that it does not have any bedroom space on that floor, which we commonly design homes now with at least one sort of office, then bedroom area so that somebody could use it at grade. Does not have that. But other than that, the first floor is pretty normal. The second floor is, consists of two bedrooms and an open space. And then there's a half-story or a third floor that has two additional bedrooms as well. So we're looking at four bedrooms and I believe three or four baths. Very straightforward house.
So is that the way it looks now? That's after your renovation?
Uh, yes. We didn't do much for the exterior.
I'm sorry, how many bedrooms now?
Uh, four bedrooms.
And how many do we have?
We're at one, two, three. Three.
Thank you.
Three and a half, sorry. But aside from that, that's how the house sits right now, literally like today, I see it like that. In the back of the property, as John would point out, there is a detached two-car garage. It has a 16-foot door on it and I believe there's a door from, from the back of the property by the house for them to access that. Also to the, yeah, that's good, John. To the west is a parking area here. That's all concrete. This is all concrete here as well. That's pretty much.
That's the layout.
And there's an in-ground pool as well.
So just if you can, and, and that angle of the garage on the right, where, where would you be adding on to the garage? Where, where would the height be? And then we'll go to the floor plan and you can kind of get the idea of.
So the existing structure, as I mentioned, is here. We're going to reconfigure this doorway a little bit to slide it over. We're actually going to put a door in here so that it come back from the beach, they can get into the garage. But our addition and the reason why we're here is going to be projecting westward from this, from this structure. Basically holding a line, we will be holding a line on the lane and projecting towards the western, the side yard setback and then projecting towards the southern point of the property, towards the house, as the plans.
So if you can just show us from. Just give us an orientation, where's the house? Because there's a lot of lines there.
Sure, of course, of course. So this is AS1. This is the sheet that you guys all have in front of you. This is the main structure here that I spoke of initially. Fourth Avenue's down here. In between the main structure and the garage is that terrace area with the pool. And then we go into this garage that's justified to the eastern corner of the property, northeastern corner of the property. Our expansion is in this western corner here and the land owns the lane, this is the top of the base.
So let's go through what the floor plan would be. So we, this, what, what we have here, well, first let me look at the elevation. The elevation, yes, thank you.
So what I've done here is I've rendered the elevations and the floor plans on one drawing. This is a, this is a sheet.
Should I start at the top or?
Uh, yeah, this is fine. So this is the view from the, the house looking towards the back of the garage, if you will. This dash line is the current ridge and, and volume of the garage as it sits now. That is reflected through as well, so you can get a feel as you go to the next elevation, which is the side here towards east. You can see the structure of that and likewise there. I do want to point out that this ridge, we are, since we're adding on and I can't, I had to turn, basically turn the roof 90 degrees. I, I had to overframe or remove the existing roof and frame over it. Long story short, that new ridge is complying with the 18 foot. So it's actually below that, I believe it's 16 and change. So there's no, no height issue there with regard to that. Our addition in this case here, this is a view from the back of the house looking at the garage, our addition is here. And then tied in architecturally and to get it to shed water and snow, I had to extend the roof over top of that.
Can you explain those doors?
Yes. So this existing door is a new door in an existing opening. This is where it exists now. This allows them to come in from the pool yard or the backyard into the garage, get in their car and leave. The addition we're building is essentially this volume here. This is a, it's a, like a French, Anderson French door with one active leaf on it, allows them to get into the, the, of the habitable space.
It's a habitable space.
Yeah.
So let's look at what the back will look like or the street side.
So again, here, this is again, the existing volume of the garage, national here. And the addition, as noted on the plan, a proposed addition, comes out approximately 11 and a half feet here, goes up and the roof comes over top of it. As I mentioned earlier, it's a 16-foot door that's there now for two cars. We're sliding it over to create space to get in, because for some reason, the garage is not built with a door anywhere close to the lane, so you'd have to actually go all the way around. But in this case, that door is just to get to the garage, in this case. And if I could just refer to the plan.
Yeah, sure. This is the original plan, right? Not moved out this week.
The only change that's on the drawing that's in front of you guys as opposed to what was submitted has to do with furniture. That's it. That's all it is and we, and, and I think John has addressed that. But I want to point out a couple of things. This is the existing door here to the garage. This is the existing garage.
Would it be better to go on these plans that's maybe a little clearer?
Yeah, that's, that's perfect, John. Yep. This is the existing garage. Two cars can go in it. We're sliding the door down and putting in the new door I mentioned. I want to point out that although this is the addition, there's no door on, from the lane to get into this addition. They actually have to come, you know, from the house, which is what they want to do, into the space. Nor is there a door from the garage into that space.
So did you do that to make it?
I'm sorry, said again, there's no door, sorry.
So this is the line in the existing garage wall that has remained.
Okay.
As you can see, there's no way to get in from the garage or have somebody come in through the garage and come into the space. They would physically have to come all the way around and come into their, literally their backyard to get into the space.
So why, why did you do that? To make it, you know, have it look to the house?
Yeah, to make it what it is. Basically, that is a space for them to use as a family member to be. And part of the reason why we did this larger door with the, with the glass panel is that when you're in there, you could actually relate to people that are either out in the pool or out in the backyard. It's that kind of connection we're trying to achieve. We did not put a door at the front of the structure here by the lane. It's a bathroom.
So let, let's take a look at the relationship to the rest of the org, when we find that drawing.
Here we go.
There's a cycle.
So just explain it now again, switching over to the overhead view of the schematic.
Yeah, I'm going to just walk through some of the perdiest things here. Effectively, from the garage down, we're not adjusting anything on the side. So everything that is there that's shaded in is existing. That includes the front walkway, the porch, the house, the convention, convention units that are there, and this, this large patio area and the pool. That's all remaining as is. When we get to the garage area, we're doing a little bit of adjustment here. Currently, and the pictures reflect that, there is a large concrete apron, cast in place, concrete, not pavers, nothing on that, for the driveway and a parking area. We're basically swapping out that concrete for part of the structure, if you will. And in order to actually get from the lane or come back from the beach from that way, there is a small walkway we're adding along the western side here to get to the back. Also, this is going to be heated. It has plumbing in it, it's going to be used all year round. So we're putting a heat pump in it for cooling and moving, so I would be very clear about that, which means that we need a, your, your cool condenser at grade, which is located right in the back of the garage, which does not require variance or any bolt requirements.
So this will have one electric meter, right? One gas meter, one?
So, yes.
Can you go through all that?
So the house, it will share its utilities from the house, including the sewer, the water, the gas, the electric.
So this is like a remote room to the house?
It does.
That's what, that's what the intent is here. All right. That's, so the, the, let, let's just take a look at the conditions of the conditional use criteria for, for accessory dwellings.
Sure.
So you said, the, the code here says that the creation of, of, the creation of an accessory dwelling shall be conditional use and shall be subject to the following standards and conditions, right?
Sure.
Then we go existing structure and then existing structures within the borough, which contain existing accessory dwellings are eligible. So we're not in the existing accessory structure, right?
Just the garage.
Just the garage, but we're not in accessory dwelling.
Correct.
It says which contain dwellings. So what, rather than, you know, we go through each paragraph of this, where do we meet and where don't we meet?
So item number three as a part of this basically lists a series of criteria that assess how compliant something like this is. The first criteria, I remember the line, item. Get on one more. Sorry, there you are. Minimum five-foot setback from the property boundaries. I will admit, we are three and a half feet on the western side. All right. This structure, when we designed it, it's approximately 12 foot, 11 and a half foot wide. It's just enough and honestly, this was designed so that somebody in a wheelchair could navigate that bathroom. And that's why it is as wide as it is.
Let's take a look again, your layout. You can explain what the.
So what we have is, as I mentioned, you come into a common space, we show a pullout sofa area, a desk, a pocket door that's 36 inches wide, a small closet. And then we have to provide heating in this place and some water heating as well, so we need that. We can't put it in the garage, the garage is not conditioned. I'm not putting it in there for the same reason. So we have a closet, but more importantly, for their, my client's needs, there's a rolling, actually, this is a walk-in tub with a door on it, and as well as a small sink and a toilet area. So this is that, that area that is fairly accessible for residential standards. And that's why we got to that width, so you could see coming off of here, that's why I did that. And subsequently, got to that three and a half foot side yard setback that we mentioned. So that was one of the criteria, which, no, it's in there, so John.
Yes, please.
So obviously, we have a 10-foot difference, a 10-foot distance from all accessory structures, the primary structures, to everything. We meet that requirement. It's mentioned on my plan that the pool is, is more than 10 feet from what we're building as well as the garage. Now, item C has to do with the area.
I'm sorry, the pool is more than 10 feet. Which letter was that?
Uh, well, letter B, a minimum 10-foot distance between accessory dwelling structures and main residential structures or other accessory structures. So we are at item C here. This is the next one. This has to do with the area. So the way I'm reading this, and John and I have read this, 650 square feet would be the footprint of it. Then there is some description about a 10% of the lot area and then up to a 15% requirement in the lot area. So in our case, we're focusing in on the 15% of percent area, which just for the math, our lot is 5,200 square feet. 15% of that, I believe, is 780 square feet. And our structure with the existing garage and the addition, which by the way is 276 square feet, the total is 733 square feet. So we would meet that criteria if I'm reading the crap.
Please continue.
I'm sorry, just, the addition was 276 square feet?
Uh, 260, uh, yes, 276, correct.
And then what was the garage?
The garage is 457.
For a total of 733.
And, and by the way, these are all included in building coverage.
Got it.
All right. I'm going to focus in on item B because I don't think, I think we're complying with item B.
Guys, do you agree?
E. This has to do with the height. This is an easy one. It's 12 feet. Maximum permitted height shall be 12 feet from average grade along the foundation to the E's. So that's, that's, that's a different component there. We're actually, by my math, nine foot eight to the E of our post garage, so we're well complying with that. And I will mention, the ridge height for accessory structures is 18. We're at 16.9 or something like that. So we're well under that, complying with that. The next.
What's the one above that today?
Let's go, yeah, let's go back to that one. Is that, that one's? Yep. So it says, there should be only, there shall only be two structures on the property, main dwelling structure and accessory dwelling structure. However, if there is another existing structure on the property, such as a detached garage, the accessory dwelling structure must be constructed as an addition to the existing structure.
And we meet that.
So that's, yep. So now let's go down to E, go to F. F has to do with attics, I believe. So attics and accessory dwelling structures without a fixed permit set of stairs, which we do not have, we don't have stairs, are permitted provided they are not used as habitable space. So we have an attic, it's for storage, except above the garage. So, but where there's no fixed stairs to it, it's a, maybe a pull-down stair in the, in the garage, we put it in or, or at least a scuffle.
Put your Christmas decorations up there.
Precisely. Item G, basements. Well, I'll cut that off. We don't have any basements. We're slabbing grade construction with both the, obviously, garage and the addition. And subsequently, they are allowed apparently. Okay, lot upon which the construction section dwelling is to be located must contain at least 4,000 square feet, I think, as I mentioned before, around 5,300.
So we meet that.
I believe we do, yeah. Item, that's four. And then how we go into parking, is this, we can get into the rest of this, but basically what this is saying, you guys can all read it, is that we're not required as a part of this to create an additional parking air, parking spot for that. But we do have two in the garage and there is parking with the lane, there is parking parallel in front of the garage.
And then that doesn't apply because we don't have any prior non-performing re-language. And that was discussed a lot of our.
Correct.
So in, in, in your view, we don't meet all the conditions, right?
No, no.
We don't meet the five-foot setback.
Correct.
And, you know, this can certainly, it doesn't exactly say it. It says the creation shall be subject to the following conditions. So one of the conditions is that you're eliminating a, a, something that's already there. It says existing accessory structures within the borough are eligible. Let me just circle that, so.
Would this be considered a pool house with a shower?
Would this be considered a pool house with a shower? A pool house, they have a pool, so you're like...
Well, you're not permitted to do that, what they have here for pool outs, because it can't be attached, it's got to be a single structure.
So, you know, those are the conditions that we meet, and we don't meet some, so...
How about, how about the lot coverage, you don't meet that either, right?
We don't meet the lot coverage, but that's not conditional, that's not, that's, right. And they're not conditional use criteria. And, and we were over to begin with, and we're going over another percentage or two, and that's, those are bulks.
Yeah, you're expanding that, and the five foot setback, you don't meet that.
We don't meet, but that's one of the conditional use criteria, the setback.
Yeah, the actual ordinance, the bulk requirements is five foot, which are, or three foot, I'm sorry. So it's five feet on the conditional use for this, what you're doing.
Yes.
And three, yeah, it was a normal garage.
So the, you know, there's, and this is kind of like arguing in a case, how many angels dance on the head of a pin? I can analyze it, and we can say legally here, legal there. I mean, the board's known, like the application or not, you certainly have the ability to deny it on one of the bulks, and I think you certainly have the authority to approve this here. But the reason why I'm going through the conditional use criteria, the, the, the points that I, I hope that we've been able to make are accessory structures are permitted. This isn't a circumstance where you've heard the expression, "Non-permitted use is the law is designed to make them wither and die." The case law actually says that. Belmar hasn't done that. Belmar has said, "If you have an accessory structure," and there's plenty of them, as there are in just about every other short, you know, "you can keep it." And, and so it is, it is a permitted use, conditionally. It's a different standard on a use variance when you don't meet the conditional use criteria. It's a lower standard in creating a non-permitted use. And, and what the idea is, the case law says that if you can ameliorate the concerns that are caused by the, that the conditions are trying to prevent from, from being a problem, then, then the board can consider that to grant the variance. In other words, each of the conditions has a reason that is trying to prevent an evil. So in our case, where, where do we, you know, what are the evils that, that, I, I would submit that the three and a half versus five foot, the reason for that is, if you have a whole apartment right there, a separate household, you don't want it right on top of your neighbor. It's not like a garage, it's not like a shed, it's not like other accessory structures. But here, because we don't have a kitchen, because we don't have cooking facilities, it can't be rented. Therefore, it doesn't have that intensity, it's going to be for members of the main household. It's a lot like a mother-daughter situation or an accessory bedroom. So the intensity of that use isn't right on top of the neighbor, so three and a half feet, I would argue, the board can consider it to be acceptable. What are, what are the other things that we don't admit, that we don't, uh, the, if, it's only geared toward non, you know, structures that are there, we have the garage there already, albeit it's not a dwelling, but we're not making a dwelling. We're really not making a dwelling, we're just making another bedroom. So that's our architectural testimony. So Mark, you want to just talk about the other bulks with the, or non-performities? I guess I can put this on...
Yeah, I'm sorry, John, just say it again. We're not making a dwelling, we are just making a bedroom.
Right. And it's really an accessory.
Yeah, I didn't hear the last word.
Is that a kitchen sink in there?
No. What we have done, Mr. Bianchi, is we've addressed a new drawing that does not have that. We've taken it out.
Is that what we already marked?
Yes, that's what we've marked. And we would agree as a condition that there is no sink, no microwave, no cooking facilities whatsoever, or laundry. So, you know, and that's how this evolved. They thought, okay, we'll put a little bar sink in there, and then we found out that, you know, Mr. Bianchi said to me, "Well, that makes it very easy for somebody to just go living in there, and it's hard to enforce." So we said, "If it's a condition of approval, no sink, it's a little different than, say, a rental restriction, because you effectively can't rent it, because you'll never get a CO without a sink and without a cooking facility." So it forces it as a bedroom. So that's where we came up with that, because that's not what our, our plan is, for this to be used as a separate space. So if I can, I'll just go through the bulks with the architect, and then I'm going to have my clients explain why they're, what goes with the fourth setback. Wait, I can put my glasses on, that's something, we need help.
That's, if, if, it's okay, I can start. Oh, yeah, there you go. Oh, that's the, that's, there it is.
And then I have a presentation.
Yep, that's what I'm looking for. Alright, so I've outlined, on the drawings before you, I've outlined, obviously, all the bulk requirements, existing, proposed, and where we incur variances or non-performities. This is an undersized lot, first of all, right? I mean, it's definitely undersized, so that's gonna...
But we're over 4,000 square feet.
Yep, but I think, yeah, so we're, basically, we're incurring lot furniture and lot diameter.
And I'm sorry, what's the required lot size of the...
I have a 7,500.
Alright, and you guys have...
That's the accessory table.
The lot size is 52, I'm sorry, yes, that's the requirement.
Alright, so 5,200 exists and you require a 7,500.
Yes, this is our 75, so, okay. So, yes, front edge is off, it's 50 foot is required, we're at 40. Lot diameter, 30 is required, around 25. Lot depth is fine. The house itself has two non-performities. Basically, the front yard setback is off a little bit, 20 is required, 19.75 is existing. And the side yard setbacks are off in the house, there're supposed to be at least five in a total of 15, and we're looking at 4.7-ish, somewhere in that range, and a total of 9.6. So somehow, the house got filled like that, on existing condition. Now, as I get into the detached garage, there's a side yard setback, slightly, on the, we just sort of, the actual survey, just slightly, John. Yep, right there. Actually, down a little bit. Three foot is required for the garage. We're at, we're at 2.9, I think it was, on this east of the east side, and that side's fine. We're fine on the lane, so there's no issue there. Number of motor vehicles, this is a four-bedroom house, so I believe we need three. So we have two with the addition, we're gonna maybe put one out on the lane or in, on, on this side here, but that's, that's one issue that...
And I'm sorry, is it four bedrooms now?
Correct.
And then arguably one in the, I mean, that...
Yes, but if I recall, one of the things in the, in the...
The conditional use criteria is that you're not allowed to...
Okay, so four bedrooms now, alright, so that requires...
But you're eliminating...
But it's taking one away.
We are, we are.
Alright, and I just want to be clear, because I appreciate, you're saying you can block that in, but that's not, that's not the spot, so, you know, I don't want to present it as if that's the solution, because it's not.
Right, it's not a legal spot, that's right.
So I'm sorry, there's three bedroom, I'm sorry, three apartment spaces required?
Three are required per the standard, I think, except for the... And then the other variance, so floor area ratio, we're just, we're a bit over on that, and that's obvious because we're adding this addition. But we were over, no, actually, we're, we weren't over initially, we had 65 is required, 61.2 is existing, we're going up to 66.5 for that ratio. And building coverage, obviously, you know, it's 30%, we are over now 35.6 existing, and with this addition, it'll put us at just over four, almost 41, 40.9.
41...
Uh, 4, 40.9, yeah. So you're at 66 for addition? 66.5. 66? Yes. So you're over... Yes, the 65, yeah, of course. And then one final, impervious coverage. So we are doing this coverage count with the existing concrete staying place, and we can't take any kind of deduction for impervious pavers, or impervious pavers for that. But regardless, the calculations include all of that, per the ordinance, 55 is required, 58.6 exists, and we're going with 60.1. This also includes the aforementioned air, air cool condensing unit, I included that as well. So I think I got it covered as far as what's included, but it does put us at 60.1 for impervious. The pavers, I believe, are, are able to be reduced because they're impervious.
They are what?
They're impervious.
Existing pavers?
Yes, around the...
So that's existing, so that's, and, and Mr. Bianchi, do you think that, you know, what we're proposing will have any kind of detrimental impact on anything?
I mean, if you look at what's there now with how close, for example, the neighbor structure is, it picks up that full volume there, just compare that to where we're building, it's, it's no different, and then the lot next to it, same deal, that's maxed out as well, it actually, it kind of fits in. I mean, yes, it's taking more space, I can't deny that.
And does it see any detriment in that, or across the multifamily?
No, I think that, you know, it's, it's right there, they, they mentioned it, it's literally right on the, right back at our property. It's really kind of, it's really quite nice.
Alright, thank you, that's all I have of the architect.
Any other contractors?
I do, I'd like to have my clients come up and they say...
Alright, let's force proceed. Do, do we have any questions for the architect, or do you want to hold them all for the...
I'll hold, hold, yeah, hold, hold.
Okay, so yeah, so we'll hold on the architect. That's all our questions.
Alright, hello, good evening, if you could just state your name and address, please?
Lisa Sprague, 106, 4,000, New Jersey.
Okay, good evening, and welcome, if you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, best you know, self-evident?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, could you just briefly give the board your history with this house, raising the kids there, number of kids, and why we're here now?
Um, so we bought the house in 2005, when our youngest was a baby, and we, we split our time between Hopkorn, New Jersey and, and Belmar, Belmar was our summer house. And the baby just went to college this past year, and my husband wanted to make Belmar a permanent home, which I didn't really want to do, because I love the way it looked, back at home, but we renovated it, thanks to Mark, our architect, who's Mark Kelly, and we're here since February first, and we love it. In the meantime, my mother passed away years, two years ago in July, and at that point in time, my dad became very close to my family, and I should say, I'm an only child, so I don't have any siblings that can, you know, help or take dad, or, you know, spread that around. And so it was actually my dad's idea, the genesis for this whole thing was my dad's idea, because he comes in the summer, he visits, and he said, "Look at that garage, what if we could..." My dad's a retired engineer, so he's always been there. And I promised him, I said, "Okay, you know, we'll do it, we have to live, why not? We'll just do it." And that's what got us to this point where we are right now. Those are our needs, that's how we live, that's why we're here.
How often would your fa, will your father come to you anticipate? He doesn't live there, right?
No, my dad still lives back where I and my husband and my family came from. He visits quite a bit, he still can drive, I mean, he's doing very well, he's into his eighties. And I cook everything for my dad, you know, I, I make his meals on wheels. So, you know, he, he will be spending a lot of time with us, plus realistically with my kids, I mean, someone, they, you know, I'm a freshman in college, and they say we're supposed to be empty messers, but that's not really true. Someone is always, and especially now that we're six houses in community, someone is always at our house. If it's not friends saying, you know, "I'm here and there," it's my kids, I'm definitely dad.
Okay, Lisa, thank you very much, I have no further question, wait, wait, they might have questions.
I'm sorry.
And we'll hold our questions till the end.
Okay. And then Robert, real quick, because he would want to use this as his office as well. So if you want to come up there?
Alright, good evening, if you could just state your name and address, please?
Sure, Rob Sprague, 106, 4,000, New Jersey.
Alright, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, best you know, self-evident?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Sprague, you heard me describe the evolution of this, can you explain what, your view of how you would also use this in addition to have your father...
Yeah, I, I work predominantly from home, and I do need a quiet space, and for me, this would give me enough space to set up a pretty decent office, and so we can sort of use it, I'd probably be using it as my office more than anything else, and then allowing it to be converted into an existing ad trans plot. That's it, right?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But those are all the witnesses I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll open up to four questions.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I just asked two, two questions before, and this would either be for the architect or Mr. Jackson, and they're not, got your questions at all, but it's just, obviously, it's a very nuanced process, so I guess my first question would be, just, that ordinance that we're talking about, I mean, what is that, what's the headache? Is it called conditions for accessory dwellings?
I'll, I'll read the, the, the ordinance numbers to the record. Sure, there's the E code. It's section 40, dash 6, point 14, point 3, areas where accessory dwellings are permitted as conditional uses, semiqualification of units and conditions of converting.
Okay, and again, not, not a, so we're using, on the one hand, we're saying conditions for accessory dwellings, but then, on the other hand, you're saying it's not really an accessory dwelling?
Right, it's, it's, you know, the, the zoning officer told me, "Look, I'm looking at this as a dwelling, so rather than, you know..." Fight upstream with that. I said, "Okay, then I, I think we can make a, a, a good case as an accessory, accessory dwelling, if you consider it to be a dwelling, but we'll add a condition that it can have a kitchen or facilities, to the extent that it's a dwelling, people still will hibernate it, and they'll sleep there."
Okay.
It has elements of a dwelling, but not all.
And then, Mr. Chairman, one other question for, for your team, is Mr. Jackson referenced this earlier, because he, I think one of the earlier versions of your documents had said, "Hey, we're just going to use this unit for friends and family," something to that effect.
Yes.
And April, I told you that, so I, I spoke to, you know, John, she said, "You better call Mr. Kennedy, because he had a case." So I did reference the, the case, and gave him a copy of the case, and I said, of course, it's been like a year and a half since I've looked at that, but I, I said, "Hey, listen, that basically, that brand that, you know, used by my own family and friends was frowned upon as, from the court, as being hard to enforce, and what does exactly it mean, and, and you can't necessarily treat an owner different from a tenant." So I guess, John, one of the nuanced questions would be, is, is that happening here? Are we treating, you know, how would you answer the question, are we treating an owner different from a tenant?
Do you want me to address that?
Yeah, I mean, just, just...
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, you know, it's interesting, one, one of the, the things that Judge Aquilina talked about was this case, TERC Act, version 1.11, this is my case. It's not a prohibition on rentals, this is not discrimination against rentals. What the TERC Act case said, and what Judge Aquilina said here is, you know, if, if it's a household, if it's a dwelling, and, and this very case, it was a dwelling, it had a kitchen, and it was an actual dwelling, and they said, "Oh, we're only going to live there, we're only going to have our, our family there." And the court said, "Well, you really can't do that, because the TERC Act case says there's no difference when it's occupied, the, the status of whether their family or whether the renters, doesn't matter." So what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm making our stipulation different than that. Of course, our family's going to use it, because we're not going to put the facilities in there that would lend it to rental. So I'm not saying you can't rent it, I'm saying it's not a dwelling. And that's why it's, it's, you know, that's why they have a board of adjustment, every case is different, and everything has nuance. And, and the irony is that, you know, this isn't, this is exactly what Robert told me at the very outset, he said, "We just want our father to stay there, and I want to use it as an office, and, you know, the kids might use it now and then as well, we have no intention of renting it." And then Mr. Bianchi said, you know, "You got a sink in there, it looks like a kitchen, you just pop a microwave on top of that, uh, small refrigerator, and you have a kitchen, and how am I going to enforce that?" So our proposal is, it's got nothing to do with rental or not rental, it has to do with we're not going to put facilities in it that will enable it to get a rental CO as a standalone unit. It's a lot like a mother-daughter, in that you have an, an ability to have a bedroom for members of the same household. The members of the same household that will use this. You have to use the main kitchen, you have to use the main mailbox, everybody's garbage goes in the same garbage can, same electric meter, same water meter, it doesn't have most of the elements of, of a separate household. So that's, that's what we're proposing, and that's how this evolved. So I hope I can answer your question.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you ready for four questions?
Yes, I am.
I'm just saying, we'll start if you're ready, is it down by you?
Sure. Thank you very much for doing your homework, and realizing that apartments weren't the way we look at a dwelling, and to those of your dad for coming up with this idea. It's, it's a good idea in that respect. One of the concerns that I had is, God forbid, there's an emergency, because I, I drove down, I had to find where Elizabeth Lane was, and I drove down in my S U V, and I'm like, "How am I going to get out of here?" I mean, in an emergency, are, are you recording like from the front? Is there a way to report, like, if someone's, your dad's in the back, and, and there's an emergency, you get the vehicles to the back versus coming to the front and then going all the way to the back? In that respect, that would be my only safety in...
The, the lane is fairly wide, I'm, I'm sorry.
The lane is fairly wide, so I don't see any reason why an emergency vehicle couldn't get back there.
Okay, it just, it was just a thought.
Yeah, I understand.
We actually had a dumpster back there not that long ago.
Yeah, they checked out the dumpster.
When we moved, so, and we never driven small cars with our family, so...
Thank you.
Great. And I don't think I have anything with it, I, I just, you do obviously agree that this could never get a CO, and the proposal that could never be rented.
That's what we agree, and that, that the facilities will be there, and that will be the important factor.
That's just be a one to give to Ross.
I guess my question is more of the ordinance that you flashed up on the screen, and I guess my confusion lies in that it seems as though the ordinance allows for accessory dwelling, if you meet all those criteria, and nothing is prohibiting accessory dwelling of having, say, a kitchen or... So I guess my question, and where I'm going with this, is, we've got an ordinance that allows for it, but then that would then trigger a D variance, because you could then technically have a multifamily situation there, if you're not able to put the restrictions on it. So like, it seems like it's conflicting with the master plan, that with, I'm confused on that.
Well, that, that goes to the, if I may, Mr. Kennedy? That, that goes to the nature of the conditional use. Now, I, I said at the outset, we don't meet all the conditions, you could say no to this. And the question is, how do we ameliorate the conditions that we don't meet? And also, you know, it, that, that's the whole reason to have a board of adjustment. Sometimes things don't exactly fit, the concept doesn't exactly fit, and, um, we're, we're asking for, as, as, I have noticed for a D variance, I think Mr. Kennedy would put this down as a D variance, and any change or expansion would require coming back to the board, and one of the conditions, that's why I think the board could say, you know, that this is a part of a dwelling unit, and, um, those conditions are what make it work, why, when you don't meet the conditions, if you're inclined to rent this out.
And if you met all those criteria, if you met all those conditions that are in there, you still, I think it said in paragraph A, have to present the application to the planning board?
Yes, what a coni, conditional use is like a, you know, you don't see them too many times, um, but the conditional use says that when you meet all the conditions, uh, you go to the planning board, to make, and their review is to make certain that it meets all the conditions, and then when they meet them, there, it's a fire right application.
And if you don't meet them, you come here for a D variance, believe.
Would you comment, you wrote, or would you quote?
Because here's what I'm struggling with, Robert, is, um, I think this is very desirable for probably everybody, everybody wants this, right? At least, I would love this use for my garage as well. I just feel like, it seems like it's not in the spirit of what the whole master plan is saying with respect to dwellings, so I'm a little bit caught off guard with that ordinance, to be quite honest with you. I mean, I knew it existed out there, I just didn't know it was written in such a way that it is. So, and, and then so, I guess another thing that I'm struggling with is the coverage, like, it's an undersized lot to begin with, and so we're going to increase the intensity, um, and reduce the parking space, and so I'm not sure if the lot to be situated for this use, so that's my comment. And I, I guess I got, I can't say use, because it's not a use, right, it's a traditional use. That's my feelings.
Mr. Ross?
Uh, I agree with Mr. Ross, you know, and looking at the lot, other than the front lawn, there's not a blade of grass on that lot, and you're just going to take away some more, I mean, there's some of this concrete there, but you're just throwing it into the morgue, and that's what I'm struggling with.
Thank you. Do we have a, a lot coverage total? Did I miss that one, or? And, uh, yeah, third one, is that what it is? And then includes all the pavers and?
Yes. I'm sorry, the lot coverage is what?
What year was the pool, so?
Uh, I, I honestly don't know.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Not twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, it's during COVID.
So, you know, you were on record for saying, "Go to your, uh, permit."
Yes, that's what, yes.
Permit and favor.
Yes, we bought permit with favor, it was like a permit. And everything.
Can you talk to me about how do you, where did that was stored?
So that was my initial concern, when they asked me about this project. Can we get gravity-fed line, a gravity-fed line to the front of the house? The, the current sewer, sanitary line exits the front of the house like most. And I actually had them bring a plumber out, and do the calculations, and figure out the universe of the pipes, and we'd been told that we could do that from there, and it would go, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be disrupted, don't get me wrong, because we're gonna have to dig a trench, but it's gonna go along the side of the pool, and into the back of the house, and into the crawl space of the house.
Okay, so with that being said, you have a, you have an opportunity to reduce the impervious coverage variance?
Well, we would.
The existing impervious coverage condition, right?
We would, um, we'd put the paver back in place.
Yeah, you have an opportunity to reduce it from sixty percent.
Yeah, we, I guess we could.
To compliance.
Yeah, I guess we could cut it back, yeah, of course, yeah. It's a little close to the pool, but yes, yeah.
And then what about electric?
Uh, it'd be the same scenario, different trench, but yes.
Is there electric in the garage currently?
Uh, there is, but not enough for the apartment, so they have to run, uh, something.
Where's the electric?
Uh, well, it's in the, in the house now, in, I believe, one of the closets, actually.
No, I'm saying, is it our, I'm sorry, is it, is the electric come from the front of the dwelling, or it comes from the rear?
Uh, I believe it comes from the front of the dwelling. Comes from our house. Oh, yeah, into, no, but on this, on the street. On the street, comes from the front, yes. Yes, okay.
And is there areas that comes from the front of the house, or it comes from the rear?
So the service comes into the house on the front of the house, correct? Yep. There's a mini panel on the first floor of the house near the kitchen, we have, work around it when we redesign the kitchen area. Then we're gonna run a conduit through the crawl space, through the backyard, into a sub panel in the garage, and I'm sure there's a conduit there now, unless it's direct burial, but we can't use that, that's not an power.
Is that the house?
Yes. Yeah, I don't either. It's a, it's a box in front of our neighbor's house. Is there an underground? It's underground, yeah. It's, it's, the owner's claiming that it's underground from, I presume, this panel with the conduit on it? So they're proper.
There's repairs, we're making sure. And, uh, to, to Mr. Ross's point, why not, uh, why not put the kitchen in it, if it's, if it's allowed, if it's a conditional use?
Because we, we think that, that's not what we want, first of all, that's not our intent, the way we want to use this, um, and we don't meet the conditions, we know the board could say no, we thought the, the most persuasive case we would make would be if we made it unsuitable for rental.
Number?
I really have nothing else but, I have a first couple of job doing that, Randy said. Mr. Diario?
I gotta say, I've rented a lot of Airbnbs that don't have kitchens, so, I mean, it can be a rental without a kitchen. Uh, the parking aspect concerns me, you got four bedrooms, you gotta add another bedroom, where does everybody park? Probably not in your garage, because I walked down the alley, and it looked like you pulled in there much. So if everything's on the street, pretty much.
Well, we just moved right out.
You're a hundred block of Ocean Avenue, and, you know, it's, it's crowded, so that's my concern.
Okay, and, um, just my question and more comment, it's more common to question than that, but, yeah, I completely understand the ordinance, um, we didn't understand, but I understand the ordinance, um, for accessory dwelling dwellings that you're putting up there, right? And, um, I understand Mr. Ross's concern, because it potentially could result in, yeah, sure, I, like, you know, my garage, right, like, and everybody's like, so, but if that's legitimately applied, I would say, that notwithstanding, the additional variances that this is triggering is enormous. I, I mean, you're already pushing the limits on, on everything, when the house was already built, or when the pool went in, or, or maybe predated the current occupants, I, I don't know when the pre, previous build was built, but it certainly pushed the tolerance, and at that time, whoever came forward probably testified that that's it, that this is going to be everything we need, and now we're coming back for more, and the more is a lot, I mean, it's a big ask, so, you know, if it weren't triggering all these additional variances with parking, we set back the coverage, you know, I, I might be more prone to, to, to hear about, yeah, it's just gonna be an unattached bedroom, but according to street rules, it'd be very difficult for me to feel, feel good about saying yes to this. So with that, um, I'd like to open up to the public for public questions or comments. Anyone here to speak on this application? There's some people, I mean, I gotta be.
I'll speak by two cents.
You've been sitting here all night for any, for nothing, right?
Yeah, I'm on my time.
All right, good evening, welcome, if you could just state your name and address?
We're close to the end, so.
Charlie, what's your last name? N C G T H.
All right, good evening, and as the chair indicated, thank you for waiting. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best your knowledge, to help you guide?
Thank you.
Just your address, for the record?
One oh eight.
Thank you.
Evening, boys. So, yeah, I'm, I guess as you can see from this presentation, these, my neighbors, the Spragues are, let's just say, over the top with detail, and they are classy, and anything they would do would be way more than acceptable to anybody. Reason I'm here is, I'm the end of the, end of the alley, so if anything would, any, any kind of, um, development or anything that would be done, would probably affect me the most, because I, as, as being the end, if there's a lot, if there's more, more development done on the, on the way in, then it would prevent me, it would, it would, it would affect me with traffic, it would affect me with my view of the, to the northeast, and I'm, I'm, I'm here to say that I have no objection to anything that they're planning on doing. As for your concern about the alley and its width, you can fit two cars per, uh, side by side easily up and down the alley, it is that way. So that, that's never been an issue. People have been parked and driven around for years, without, without you in a blink of delay. So there isn't, there isn't an issue with the, with the alley, so that's all I wanted to say, is that I'm being the end, end residence, there is no concern on my part in that, anyways. And that's it. Thank you.
Hello, name and address?
George Comptas, one oh one, Third Avenue, sir.
All right, good evening, and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think they have a lot going on, I would be in favor of this, uh, just they need more variances, suppose, if you'd like to vote. On the issue of, uh, parking, I remember twenty years ago, when they asked somebody in Asbury Park about, people can't park anymore, and the man said, I wish I remember his name, but he said, "Would you rather have the Asbury Park we had ten years ago?" I understand, because I had a restaurant in town, and I liked seeing Bellmar busy, but that's just the way it was in the young lady. But parking's always been a problem during the summer, on the weekends, I remember in the eighties, you couldn't even take an hour to go from the bridge to spring light, I mean, I remember when all the bars were there, I mean, compared to what we have now, maybe twenty days a year, summer, we have a problem, but parking has always been a problem in a town that's successful, in my opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, no one else from the public, this here is people closing the public portion, and, uh, I suppose we'll open up to the summary, Mr. Kennedy?
Sure, um, if the application were to be approved, uh, some of the potential conditions that I've taken note of would be, our standard compliance with all the promises, commitments, and representations the team made, usually there's a twenty-four month timeframe, uh, within which you will secure a building permit, obtaining any necessary outside approvals, creating a range of details to be reviewed and approved by the board engineer if necessary. Uh, there was no sink, uh, uh, there's going to be no C O issue, because there's no kitchen, um, not to be, uh, rented, they're saying this is not an apartment. It was, that, towards that, front of that garage structure, uh, one, it'd be sharing the meters, one meter for, uh, water, sewer, gas, electric. A kitchen, no cooking, so it can't be rented, um, no sink, no microwave, no laundry room. Confirmation that impervious pavers around the pool already exist, uh, no CO can be rented, no further change or expansion, uh, or change absent further approval of the board. Sewer connection and electric connection in accordance with, with the dwelling regulations. I think that was the gist, I know there were some other comments about, uh, maybe reducing, uh, coverage in connection with sewer connections, I don't know if that's a condition, um, and that was the gist of that.
And again, this is a use variance, so seven, seven members get called, and obviously, for a use variance, we need five affirmative yeses.
Okay, so with that, uh, is, is anyone on the board, um, like to make a motion, um, to approve, uh, the variance for one oh six fourth Avenue? I'll make a motion. I just want to clarify, just because you make a motion to approve, doesn't necessarily mean you're voting to approve, correct?
Correct, and there'll be a motion.
You just make a motion to approve it, but then both know each other's.
Yes, and John, you acknowledge that, correct?
I acknowledge, I, I understand.
Okay. Because what happens if, if no one ever makes a motion?
Yeah, I mean, you, you could make a motion to deny it, um, you know.
Motion to deny, okay, I, I understand.
Either, you know.
All right, we typically go motion to approve, okay, so, so Mr. Lumen's making a motion to approve, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, and so yes is to approve.
Right.
So, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mr. Almada?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Lumen?
No.
Mr. Diario?
No.
Mr. O'Leary?
No.
Okay, so that application is, is denied, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, and, uh, Mr. Lisa Sprague.
Thank you very much, and I'd love to publicly thank Mr. Kennedy, very, very helpful, Mr. Bianchi, very accessible, April's always a pleasure, and, um, also sitting here, seeing, you know, the three cases in front of us, this board, um, you know, I understood the direction, you usually don't, and I feel like you actually, you listened, and you had an open mind, and, um, I know it's not an easy thing to say no to nice people like this, it's not easy to hear no.